All right, are we ready? Can you hear me? Okay, great. It is now 5:05 on September 5th and the Community Development Committee meeting is called to order. May we have a roll call, please?
Chairman Hayes.
Present.
Alderman Newsom.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
Present.
Alderman Donenworth.
Present.
Alderman Florian.
Present.
Thank you. Okay. Item C, may I please have a motion and a second for approval of the meeting minutes from August 7th, 2023, from the Community Development Committee meeting?
So moved.
There's a first by Alderman Florian, a second.
Second.
Alderman Newsom, thank you. Are there any questions to the, to the meeting minutes? I think we can do this as an all in favor, right? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Audience time is item number three on the agenda. Are there any members of the audience that would like to address the committee?
Mr. Chairman, could we just say that there was a public hearing scheduled for this evening at 5 o'clock with regard to an annexation at 36955 North Northern Avenue? That hearing is postponed to September 18th at 5:00 PM.
Sounds good.
Thank you, sir.
You said it better than I could've, so that works. All right. Number four is old business. Item A in old business is an ordinance approving zoning calendar number 2719, map amendment for 2226 North Northern Avenue from CR Conservation Recreation Agriculture to R1 Single Family Residence. May I have a motion and a second for item A?
So moved.
Second.
Well, I'll tell you what, if you're gonna address us, you can, you can come up. No, that's okay. Does anybody have any questions for the petitioner?
I was told all the code issues have been addressed, correct? Okay, great. Thank you so much. Thank you for cleaning that up.
Okay, thank you ma'am. Appreciate it.
Do you want us to wait for the next meeting as well? I believe there's two meetings we have to attend.
Yes, ma'am. So it's being, it'll be voted on here momentarily in committee and then it'll be set to the general.
Okay. So I just wanted to make sure I don't.
No, that's okay. Thank you for being here tonight.
No, of course.
Okay, can I have a roll call, please?
Can I just make a correction? Did you say it was on this evening's city council agenda?
Uh, no. At the next one.
Thank you. Okay, just wanted to be clear.
I think she misunderstood.
Okay. It's not on tonight's city council agenda. So the vote would be this, this meeting and then in two weeks on September 18th at 7:00 PM at the city council meeting. Yes. They're gonna take the vote on it and then you can be dismissed if you like. You're also welcome to stay.
Sorry for any confusion, but we will vote on it now so you know, at least how it turns out in committee.
Alderman Florian?
Aye.
Alderman Donenworth?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Chairman Hayes?
Aye. Motion passes. Okay, on to new business. Number five on the agenda. Item A is a Visit Lake County Partnership Recap Presentation and Authorization to Pay the Annual Partnership Contribution in the Amount of $34,125. I believe somebody is here to address the committee if need be, if anybody has any questions on this?
Yeah, I'm curious if we could have a description of what, what this is, what this is, what it means, what happens with Waukegan's partnership.
Sure. If the petitioner, so to speak, is here, if you could answer some questions, that'd be great.
So, yeah, if you could just explain for a general edification of the audience.
If you could state your name first.
What's going on? What is this all about?
Hello, I'm Maureen Reedy. I'm the president of Visit Lake County. We're the destination marketing organization or tourism organization for the county and Waukegan is one of our key partners in our collaborative marketing alliance. So we provided a recap of everything we've done this year to help promote.
Don't touch it. Oh, okay. Just fix it so that he can pick it up there. So we provided a recap of all the return on investment you've gotten for your investment with us through the years. We do a lot of social media, marketing and advertising and we look back and how many events we promoted in Waukegan and it's so many, I had to kind of double check. We had 233 events in Waukegan that we promoted last year and over 500 social media posts. And our engagement in social media has gone up like it's just skyrocketed. So we're doing everything we can to really help kind of elevate the tourism economy here in Waukegan. So happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Thank you very much. That's all I wanted. Thank you.
I think that's it. Thank you so much for being here.
And thank you for your support.
Of course. Did we get a first and a second on this? No, okay.
Motion, second.
Okay, thank you. A first by Alderman Donenworth, a second by Alderman Turner. Are there any additional questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Alderman Florian?
Aye.
Alderman Donenworth?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Chairman Hayes?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Thank you. Agenda item B under new business is a resolution approving a new intergovernmental agreement with the College of Lake County for the use of the Madison Street Mall. Can I get a first and a second for item B?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Similarly, I believe somebody is here if we have any questions on this particular agenda item. Does anybody have any questions? Okay. Roll call, please.
Alderman Florian?
Aye.
Alderman Donenworth?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Chairman Hayes?
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Agenda item C under new business is an ordinance approving zoning calendar number 2723, a variance for fence height and zoning calendar number 2724, a site plan approval for the permanent casino facility at 600 Lakehurst Road for FHR Illinois LLC Alex Stoyer. Can I get a first and a second for item C?
I'll make the first.
Motion.
Second.
Alderman Turner? Is that you for the first?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Alderman Florian is the second. Are there any questions relating to agenda item C? Okay. Is somebody here from Full House? Okay. If you could come on up, please.
Hi.
Lou.
How you doing? If you could just state your name for us.
Alex Stoyer, Senior Vice President with Full House Resorts.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here. I was at planning and zoning, as you know, and you guys have the map up of the facility. And I asked this question then, but I'm gonna ask it again. The way the building is laid out, the entrance is kind of towards the south, I would say, of the building, right? The entrance into the building, the main entrance.
The, the main entrance is into this, into the lot is where it is right now.
I'm talking about the lot, I'm talking about the building. Getting the people into, what do you call that, the front door?
Yes, the front door and the portico chair. I wouldn't say that's south. I'd say west, more west.
Okay, well, anyway. The way the parking lot is oriented, it seems to me that the, the door, the entrance is about as far away from most of the parking spaces as you can get. I'm just curious why it was done that way. I'm assuming it was because you had to put the, the circular drive in and.
So we have the circular drive and that's where our main parking is as well around there, which is closest to the main entrance. On the rear side of the, of the building is what's called the mansion, which we talked about earlier was, you know, which is the boutique hotel. That, that goes on the rear side and that has its own parking on that side. And we don't have any room for parking really on the, on the north and south side, if you will, because we're between the two access roads.
Okay. It just seemed like, I know a lot of senior citizens come to your facility and it just seemed like an odd alignment of the entrance. You know, I own my own business and I have parking right next to my front door and I park as far away from the door as I can so my customers can have access to the door. And it just seems strange to me that the way you guys oriented it, it's the farthest away from the parking it could be.
Yeah, we could, happy to take a look at that with you. I can tell you.
I mean, I don't expect you to change anything.
No, no, but just, you know, from our standpoint, parking is our lifeblood. So we need close and convenient parking, not just for our senior citizen customers, but for all our customers. And so we, we do have that there. We have an industrial to the main park and we do have ADA parking and we will have valet parking as well. But we will have, really our goal is to make it as close and convenient as possible while also having, you know, the water features and a nice portico chair like we wanna have, which obviously does take up some space, but we wanna give you that sense of arrival.
And you'll have valet parking like 24/7 or most hours?
We will be figuring that out and, and that's one of those things you figure out as you go, but.
You currently don't have it though, right?
We currently do not have it right now at the temporary facility. We have looked at it, we might add it at some point and we will have it in some aspect at the, at the permanent facility.
Well, as long as you're here, this doesn't really have anything to do with this, but I hear a lot of complaints, there's not enough signage telling people which way to go. So I don't know if you have any control over that, but like coming off the highway and stuff?
So, so we are working with IDOC on getting the highway signage. That's unfortunately not up to us, but, or just us, but, but that, that is good feedback. That'll help as we push with them, so yes, thank you for that.
They can come sit at my office and talk to the people that come in and out all day and complain about it, so.
We, we want people to know where it is, so yes. Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Florian?
Aye.
Alderman Donenworth?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Chairman Hayes?
Aye. Motion passes. Item D, agenda item D under new business is an ordinance approving V2-2-23, the vacation of Hazel Street right of way, south of Prospect Drive, Court Place, west of Sheridan Road. Can I get a first and a second for agenda item D?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Second.
All right. I believe, are there any questions? No questions? Okay, I believe somebody's here if you do have a question.
Alderman Newsom?
Are we the petitioner?
Would the petitioner please approach if there are questions?
No questions.
Is this the Puerto Rican society?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, that's all you.
I, I just had a question and then I found out that you all black topped that parking area.
Yeah, we've been custodians.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Diego Vega and I'm Vice President of the Society and this is Carmelo Rivera. He's the President.
Okay, I have a letter, but you have a question. Yes, we black topped. We've been taking care of that for about twenty-five years now.
Is this where we establish a price or anything, or?
I don't believe that's happening at the committee meeting tonight, no.
Okay.
Okay. No, I think it was just the one question. So, thank you guys for being here.
Thank you for having us. Thank you for your support.
Mr. Chairman, that's often part of the discussion at committee. The final determination is at the council level, but...
Perfect. Okay, well then...
Has there been a fair market price evaluated?
Yes, let me pull it up here. Four thousand, five hundred and seventeen dollars is what the staff determined using the formula that we use for all vacations.
So, what was it?
Four thousand, five hundred and seventeen dollars and thirty cents. One dollar and sixty-one cents per square foot, which is the average of the land values of the adjacent parcels.
Okay, and that's, so that's the amount that they would pay to the city in exchange for us vacating that. Is it an easement?
It's currently a right-of-way.
Right-of-way, right-of-way. Okay, thank you.
So, if I may, when do, when do, when do we sell properties for one dollar?
That's not our standard practice for anything. We sometimes buy properties for one dollar. But selling properties for one dollar is not our standard. It is up to the city council what the price is set for this. The staff process is always to look at every parcel that touches the parcel that's being vacated. Do an average of the assessed valuation for the land only, for each of those parcels. Use that average and apply it to the square footage of the area being vacated. And that's how we come up with this dollar amount. So, this was an average of one dollar and sixty-one cents per square foot for each of the, across the adjacent parcels, excuse me. And it's a twenty-eight-hundred square foot section that would be vacated. So, that comes to four thousand, five hundred and seventeen dollars and thirty cents. Now, you're the council. You can make any recommendation you like.
Alderwoman Florian?
Um, do you guys feel that's a fair price?
Actually, no.
Okay, what do you think is a fair price?
We, we have been custodians of the facility or the area for twenty-five years at least. We've been taking care of the property. We've been black topping it. We've been resurfacing. And I don't see how anybody could use it for any other reason. It has no value to the city. We'd like to take it off the payroll, the tax payroll.
We don't pay taxes.
No, but we're gonna pay taxes.
You'd be putting it on.
We'd like to put it on the tax payroll and we think that would be fair for us to compensate the city.
I have a question.
Alderwoman.
What did it cost you to black top and pave that property?
I can tell you that because I'm only being the president for forty years now. And we were planning to black top it again, but it's gonna have to be next year. So, I don't know how much they paid before, but every time they do their, our parking lot, everything is done. They do that too, so.
If, if I may, so, so at some point that, that parking lot was just dirt. And you guys paid to have it black topped, right?
Right.
And then since then, you've given it, you had it seal coated periodically and maintained. Okay. Would it be appropriate to make a motion to amend this motion?
You can, you can motion.
So, I'd like to make a motion to amend this motion.
Amend the ordinance?
Amend the ordinance to set the price at one dollar.
Second.
Second. Sure. Any questions or any thoughts on the amendment?
I understand the desire of the aldermen to, you know, basically give it to you for a dollar. But the city can't always be in the, in the position of basically giving property away. We've, we've been up here buying stuff at different times and as the director said, we often get things for a dollar, but not always. I, I could see maybe meeting in the middle somewhere, but I, I think when we get in the habit of saying, oh, come, come to us and we'll give you, you know, a nice parcel for a buck, you know, we, every day we are faced with trying to make ends meet. We want more policemen. We want more this. We want more that. We can't be giving everything away for a dollar, in my opinion. But, not that I don't appreciate what you've done with the property. I don't, you know, I, I do. And, and like I said, maybe meeting in the middle would be fair.
We're, can I add that we're a community-based organization. We've been here for fifty-plus years. We've done, I think, a lot of good for the city of Waukegan. We've got a scholarship program, by the way.
I've been to your dinner many times.
I mean, we're not, we, we are trying to keep promoting and beautify the city and, or the, the facility in conjunction with the beautiful work that they're doing along Sheridan Road there. And we'd like to continue. If, if you put another cost on us, it just makes it much harder for the volunteers to continue doing what they're doing and we're, we're burning out a little bit. But it, we would appreciate if you would consider that one dollar fee. That would be...
I think we have a motion pending. Alderwoman Newsom?
May I say something too?
Okay, one other thing is you guys were liable for that.
If anything would have happened in there, you were, you were liable. We were taking care of the lot. So, nobody will be, holes in there on that and they'll fall and then you guys would have been liable, not us. And we were taking care of it. Okay, so, one other thing that we take now is the liability from you guys. And we're gonna be paying the taxes.
Put it on the tax payroll.
So, I think some of the discussion surrounds the fact that there is value because you're gonna use it as a parking lot. And the city, the city council certainly can't make a habit of giving away property, even if it's for a dollar. Although, it sounds like we're gonna be voting on that. So, we have a responsibility to everyone else in the community, even the people that are members of, of, you know, your organization, to make sure that we're also doing what's best for the city as a whole. So, we want to help you and we're really appreciative of all of the effort and the time and the resources that you've allocated to the property. But we also can't set a precedent of, or I would recommend not set a precedent of giving away property or selling it for a dollar. So, I think that maybe we can come to a compromise, but...
Didn't we give the Carnegie Museum to the Park District for a dollar?
That I don't know. But I do know that there was a, a restaurant, there was a proposal, when there was a different committee up here about giving away the property for a dollar and we decided against that because I think we were afraid of setting that precedent and we said, hey, listen, we have to get some money back into the city. So, you made a motion and a second. Kelly, dear council, tell me if...
You can vote on the motion.
Okay, so, I guess.
Can I make a suggestion that we deduct what you have paid for the pavement, repavement of the property? I don't know if it's two thousand and a half or whatever, but I know that you came to the council expecting or knowing that the cost was four thousand some odd dollars. So, I would like to maybe, I know you've maintained it, you black topped it. Taken away, huh? You haven't been paid that long.
What happens if you don't get it? What happens if you, if it's, we, we retain ownership of that?
Then we're not gonna take care of it.
There you go.
Because it's still gonna be yours and we're spending the money on take care of it.
So, then the city would have to go over there and black top it.
And then if something happened, the city is gonna be liable. So, we're not gonna maintain it.
So, the city would have to go over and black top it, seal coat it, snow removal.
And the city gave you permission to do that?
No. One other thing is, okay, I've only been president for forty years. I didn't even know that that belonged to you guys till about, probably six months ago, that we were looking, there's another lot around there that we're looking at. Then we find out the part of our parking, it belonged to you guys too.
How did they give permission to black top it?
I think we should just give it to them.
Yes. Did you, were you ever granted a license for this property, to use the property to black top it, to take care of it?
Or permit?
No.
No.
Actually, we didn't realize it was an easement.
Like I said, I didn't even know. I've only been president for forty years and I've found out when I...
You were taking care of it because you thought it was your property, not because you were doing some kindness for the city?
Whoever was president before.
Okay.
I've only been president for forty years. So, we were gonna black top again. So, then we find out the part, it belonged to you guys. So, we're trying to get it because then that way we can take care of it. You won't be liable for whatever happened there and we're gonna pay taxes on that.
On the payroll.
Mr. Chairman, you've got a motion to amend for a dollar that was, there's a second for that. So, there should be a vote on that unless, unless the alderman who made the motion wants to withdraw it, but that's, that's where we are.
Can I ask one more question? Aren't they a nonprofit organization?
Yes.
So, do they pay property taxes in O.L.?
Do we pay?
Yes.
I believe that they do. I'll double check right now.
Okay.
What's on here. But they're saying that they do.
I assumed nonprofits don't pay property tax.
I believe it depends on which IRS classification.
Yes, we do.
Okay, so maybe we can move it along. We'll vote on the motion to amend for a dollar, Keith, unless you want to withdraw it and recommend a different amount. I'm sorry. Do you want to vote on the motion to amend?
Please, yes.
Okay. Roll call, please. And just so we're clear, Kelly, maybe you can tell us exactly what we're voting on.
Yes, so the motion you're voting on is a motion to amend the current ordinance as written to sell for a dollar. Alderman Florian?
No.
Alderman Donanworth?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Newsom?
Nay.
Alderman Hayes?
Nay. I am up for proposing another dollar amount or I'm open to hearing other, I, I think it'd be nice to try to get a result tonight, if we can do that, rather than asking them to come back. Clearly, you took care of it. You knew it wasn't your property, but you still took care of it. There's probably some value there. I don't want to make it sound arbitrary, but if we maybe reduced it by half, given the fact that they allocated resources to it, which gets us somewhere in the neighborhood of twenty-two fifty-eight, maybe that's a fair compromise. So, I give...
They do pay taxes on the building.
How about a thousand dollars?
So, then I'd make a motion to reduce the proposed price from four thousand, five hundred and seventeen dollars and thirty cents to fifty percent of that amount. Or I'm open to other amounts.
Fifty percent is two thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars and sixty-five cents.
Is there a second?
Can we hold this over?
I'll second it.
There's a first and a second on the motion to amend for two thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars and sixty-five cents. So, unless there's discussion, there can be a vote on that amendment.
Yeah.
Can, can we hold this over?
There's already a first and a second. Mr. Chairman, may I answer Alderman Turner's previous question about the Carnegie?
Please.
That was sold for a dollar, but the reason that was is because the, the Park District is another taxing entity. It's another unit of government and so it would be the same taxpayers paying the taxpayers. And that was the reason for doing that for one dollar.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Director. Okay, so we have a first and a second, so another roll call to vote on the amendment.
Alderman Florian?
Aye.
Alderman Donanworth?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
No.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Alderman Hayes?
Aye. So, I want to make sure I'm getting this right, council. So, we have voted to amend and now we need to vote on the amendment?
Yes.
Okay.
The ordinance as amended.
The ordinance as amended, thank you.
So, the ordinance now should read, you know, the sale of the property is two thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars and sixty-five cents. And I don't know what price per square foot that is because my math isn't that good.
Probably half of the one dollar sixty.
And you said it was twenty-two fifty-eight, sixty-five? Okay. Okay, so should I read it as amended and then we vote on it? Is that, okay, thank you. Okay, so, agenda item D as amended is an ordinance approving the V-dash-two dash-two-three. The vacation of the Hazel Street Right-of-Way, south of Prospect Drive, Court Place, west of Sheridan Road for the amended price of two thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars and sixty-five cents. Roll call, please. Oh, I need a first and a second?
First.
Second.
Okay.
Alderman Florian?
Aye.
Alderman Donanworth?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Sounds like another case of the government versus the people, us versus them. And not being business friendly, can't be business friendly if we're not business friendly. I'm gonna vote no.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Chairman Hayes?
Aye. Agenda item E is an ordinance approving zoning calendar number twenty-seven, twenty-six.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you, gentlemen. I'm sorry. We appreciate you being here. Agenda item E under new business is an ordinance approving zoning calendar number twenty-seven, twenty-six. It's a map amendment to rezone zero north, Macquarie, zero-eight dash seventeen dash one hundred dash zero, zero, five from R-four, one and two family residences to R-six, general residence. Can I have a first and a second for item E?
So moved.
First was Alderwoman Newsom, second is Alderwoman Florian. Are there any questions?
Mr. Chairman, might I add that the next agenda item is also for the same project?
Okay. Would you like to take them both at the...
Separate motions because they're separate ordinances, but just if there are questions. If we can only have the petitioner come up once, that would probably be more convenient.
Sounds good. Are there any questions?
Is the petitioner, petitioner's here?
Yes, okay. Come on up.
I know, thank you. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, there is a presentation that's up on the screens.
I understand the Housing Authority is going to be taking this property. They'll be working, the little homes that are next to there, to the south, are those part of the, are they part of the housing?
They are not part of the Housing Authority. They're owned separately.
Okay.
Sarah, would you introduce yourself and maybe talk about the project?
Yeah, of course. Hi, everyone. My name's Sarah Beck. I'm with Bear Development. I'm the project manager for the ravine terrace redevelopment. Bear Development has been working with the Waukegan Housing Authority since 2018 to redevelop their entire portfolio. We've been their partner on both barbell and armory terrace apartments, which is directly adjacent to this parcel to the north. So, I don't know if you'd be, are you clicking the button?
I am not.
Clicking the button? Flag, okay. I'll give you a finger wag. So, you can go to the next slide.
Give him one second. Thanks.
All right, so just a little bit about this, this parcel, what's coming before you is twenty-eight units of new construction. But this is a larger part of the ravine terrace redevelopment. Just a little bit about this. This is utilizing the RAD program. So, that takes public housing from the Section Nine platform to a... so that takes public housing from the Section Nine platform to a Section Eight platform, which allows you to take out debt on the property, use private sources of financing to do a large-scale remodel, which is really not capable of happening under the Section Nine program, because you cannot leverage debt based on the rents of a public housing development. So, in addition to that RAD program, we are applying for low-income housing tax credits, which allow us to do a very large-scale redevelopment of both the ravine terrace tower that's at two hundred South MLK, as well as this new construction component. So here's the existing building. It was built in nineteen sixty-six, and it has a preference for seniors and persons with disabilities. There are ninety-eight units there right now. Forty-two of those are one-bedroom, and fifty-six are studios. The studios are very small. They're about three hundred and fifty square feet, so our intent here is to combine two studios to make a one-bedroom throughout the entire property. So you take those fifty-six down to twenty-eight. Under the RAD program, one of the key elements is maintaining the number of affordable units. So that's what this new construction piece is. Those twenty-eight units that are being displaced from this site would be new construction on the Macquarie site. Macquarie, I'm sorry. I've been saying that wrong for like five years. You get it stuck in your head one way. So here's the parcel. As I mentioned, it's south of the Armory Terrace redevelopment that we have under renovation currently. It's adjacent to the bus stop with access to the five sixty-one and five sixty-six bus lines, and directly to the east is Clearview Park, which has walking paths and fitness trail equipment. And also as part of the Armory Terrace redevelopment, a new construction of the WHA offices will be right there, so they'll have quick access to anybody they would need at the Housing Authority at this new development. Here is the site plan. As I mentioned, it will be twenty-eight one-bedroom units. Right now, there is that preference for seniors and those with disabilities. That preference will remain in place. What we're requesting tonight is the map amendment from R four, which allows for one and two family residences up to R six. Under R six, this would be an allowed use, and we're developing within kind of the lot sizes setbacks required of that code. The only variance request we're asking for is for parking. Right now, Waukegan's code has two parking stalls per residential unit, whether it's family or senior. We're requesting one point two stalls per unit. This is what we do at both our affordable and market rate developments for seniors is about one point two. And just for reference, right now, for the ninety-eight units, there are only twenty-eight parking spots. Those would remain at the property, and this, this would be additional parking. Just to make you aware, there's one issue that we're working through. You can see where the wetland is delineated on this site. The Lake County WDO requires a forty-foot buffer. We're working with the City of Waukegan Engineering Department to get a letter of no impact. We are staying within, there are kind of lots of rules around what that buffer entails, but we're working closely with them to try to get a no-impact letter. The wetland is a low-quality inland wetland, and the City of Waukegan and Lake County have jurisdiction over that. And this is just an example of what the new construction units will look like. These are actual properties that we have developed. Let me pull up my notes on here real quick. It'll come with a full suite of appliances, central air, which is not in the building right now, central systems, and a lot of common area amenities. If you wanna go to the next slide. The common amenities include an outdoor patio, a community room with a kitchen, something like you see there, a package room for residents, onsite management and leasing office, bulk storage for residents, and a fitness center. So that's just kind of an overview of why we're in front of you tonight, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
So you mentioned that the current building is for seniors and disabled persons. Is that gonna be the case for this also?
That's correct.
Okay. And then you talked about how it's close to the park, which is great, but I didn't see a path to get from the building to the park.
We don't have the property, we don't own the property that is in between our property and the park. So they would have to take the sidewalk around through Chapel, the road on Chapel Hill. We don't own that piece to the, to the behind to do that. There's also the wetland back there.
Right. Okay.
Any other questions?
This is a great thing, by the way. Thank you for doing this.
Really excited for this one. I think the new construction outlet is really a fantastic way that both properties are very improved.
What's the, what is the Section Nine program? I've never heard of it.
That, that is public housing.
Pardon me?
Public housing is the Section Nine program. So under that, it's what the Housing Authority owns, and they receive capital and operating funds instead of having a set rent. Whereas on the Section Eight platform, you have set rents in a contract from HUD, which is why you can take out the debt and equity that you need to do a major renovation.
Got it. Thank you very much.
Of course.
Thank you for your presentation. Appreciate it. Okay, roll call, please, on item Agenda E.
Alderman Florian?
Aye.
Alderman Donenworth?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Chairman Hayes?
Aye. Item Agenda F, under new businesses, a motion to adopt an ordinance approving zoning calendar number twenty-seven twenty-seven. It's a variance from parking requirements of two spaces per unit to one point two spaces per unit at zero north Macquarie. Now, we just heard a little bit of explanation about the reasoning behind this request. Can we get a first and a second?
First.
Second.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? No? Okay, roll call, please.
Alderman Florian?
Aye.
Alderman Donenworth?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
I don't think we should be stipulating minimum parking requirements on private property, so I'm gonna vote no.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Chairman Hayes?
Aye. Thank you. Item Agenda B, or excuse me, G, under new businesses, a motion to adopt an ordinance approving zoning calendar number twenty-seven twenty-eight. Its variance is from the minimum lot size, landscape buffer, and landscape island requirements. And zoning calendar number twenty-seven twenty-nine, a conditional use permit for motor vehicle sales at twenty-five oh three Washington Street. This, is the petitioner here on this particular agenda item? Yes? Okay. Can I get a first and a second?
I'll first, but I got some questions about this.
A second? I'll give you a second, just so we can get some of Alderman Newsom's questions answered. If you could just state your name and introduce yourself.
My name is Anan Meshkic, and I own the business and property there.
Okay. And forgive me, but if you could just talk up a little bit, that'd be great.
Okay.
You said that you own the property?
Correct.
And right now, it's being used to repair vehicles?
Correct.
And what you wanna do is?
Sell, sell motor vehicles.
Sell vehicle, vehicles on that property, and you will be, I, I believe I read that you will be repairing the vehicles and then selling them?
Yes, yes. So, when we acquire the vehicles, we, we do an inspection on them, and through our facilities there, we got four lifts currently. We do have in the plans to expand the building down the road, to add more, more base, to be able to fix cars, and then put them on display there and sell the repaired cars that we get.
Is there enough room to expand?
Yeah, in the, in the back, yes.
Back going south?
Yes, yeah, behind the building, to make it, uh, right now the building's shaped like an L, to make it shaped like a rectangle.
How many vehicles do you propose acquiring and selling? At any one time?
There is space for, for twenty-four parking spots on the lot. So, a mix between display vehicles for sale and customer parking. And the building itself, I can hold inside the building and in the back probably another, around ten or fifteen cars, depending on the size.
Okay. I myself would like to come out and take a look and do a visual of this property, because I have so many in my ward now that we put conditions on, and then they go outside of the conditions, and it's just like a parking lot now. So, I would be reluctant to approve this tonight without seeing.
Okay. I've, I've gone through one of these, but not in Waukegan. I've gone through in Beach Park, and I haven't had any issues with, with Beach Park.
You have one in Beach Park?
Yeah, I, I went through conditional use in Beach Park from about twenty-seventeen to about twenty-eighteen. Took about two, two and a half or so years to go through the, through the zoning process. I did new block top there, did new landscaping, planting shrubs, new signage, and all that. And I haven't had any issues with, with that city. The reason I'm trying to convert this into a dealership is I'm trying to move that business, moving that business from Beach Park to Waukegan.
What is the address in Beach Park?
Uh, it is thirty-seven nine thirty-seven North Sheridan Road in Beach Park, Illinois.
Thirty-seven nine thirty-seven?
Thirty-seven nine thirty-seven North Sheridan Road, yeah, in Beach Park, Illinois.
Okay.
So is that a motion to hold it over? Oh, sorry.
I would. Go ahead, go ahead. So, you're asking to do this on one of our main thoroughfares, which is an issue to me. That's a main road. I mean, I just drove by there on my way down here from work today. You're asking us to give you quite a few variances from the lot size, the landscape, the buffer, you know, and a conditional use. That's a lot of asks for such a small parcel. I agree with Alderman Newsom, and it is one of my pet peeves, along with her, I believe, that we have these auto repair businesses all through town. They park gazillions of cars in a very small area. When I drove by today, you had, you had cars down the middle, then there were also, there was a car parked not in a parking space, that was parked behind the cars that were parked parallel to the road. So already, you, you have, you're not even selling cars yet, and you had a pretty full lot today. And you just said, when you were speaking, you said sell more cars. So you're already selling cars from this lot?
No, no, no.
So you misspoke when you said that?
Correct, if I misspoke. I apologize.
Okay.
There's no license.
Cause you are not licensed to sell cars currently.
Yeah, there's no license from, from Springfield to sell vehicles.
So you're gonna repair them in Waukegan and then sell them in Beach Park, as well as sell them in Waukegan?
Just, uh, Waukegan.
So what, right now, you just, someone comes in with a broken car, you fix it and it goes away? How come there were so many cars parked in your lot today?
Lot of business.
What was that?
How come there were so many cars parked in your lot today?
I'm, I'm fixing my, my dad's cars. He has a dealership in Zion.
Oh, so you fix them and sell them in Zion?
For, for my dad, yeah, for his cars.
So the sales tax goes to Zion when you fix a car in Waukegan?
He has a dealership in Zion, and it, it's only a, a single building. There's no repair facilities there. So I'm using the facility in Waukegan to fix cars and get them ready for, for, for his cars.
So how are you gonna decide which cars you sell in Waukegan and which ones you sell in Zion?
It depends on which account they're, they're bought. So if the, from the auction, if they're bought on, on my father's account, then they go to his dealership. If they're bought on, on Remitum Motors, then they'll stay there. That's the differentiation. But currently, there's no dealership license from Secretary of State Springfield to sell vehicles there. There's just a license from Waukegan to repair, as a repair facility.
So your father owns a business in Zion?
Correct.
And you own a business in Waukegan?
Correct.
And you contract to fix your father's business's cars? So that your father can sell them in Zion?
Correct.
All right. And now you wanna have your own dealership?
Correct.
On this lot?
Correct.
Thank you.
I, I had a dealership from twenty-eighteen to June of this year in Wa, in Beach Park, and the property was sold to another person, so we had to move out of that business.
So you gotta move your business from Beach Park to Waukegan?
Yes. I'm, I'm hoping to get the approval to then transfer the license to Waukegan, from Secretary of State.
New business in Waukegan. It's a new business that's coming to Waukegan. I mean, it already exists. Yeah, it already exists, but it'll be new in Waukegan.
Correct, for, for auto sales, hopefully after, if I get approval.
Okay. All right, thank you. Alderman Newsom, was that a motion to hold it over?
I would like to until the October third meeting. That would be the next community development meeting.
Okay. Is there a second to hold it over?
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
If you have to wait another month, how would that impact your timeline?
I'd, I'd have to give up the, the current license from, from Beach Park to, to Springfield.
So you'll be out of business until you...
Correct, yeah.
You said it took you two and a half years to get through the process in Beach Park?
Yeah.
And how long have you been working with Waukegan?
Maybe like six months.
We're doing pretty darn good.
Since the very first time you came in, maybe six months, yes.
We're, we're three times faster than they are.
The, the issue with the, with the other one, don't wanna cause any issue, is that the, the previous owners, they had a conditional use, and they didn't follow the conditional use, so the village had an issue with another conditional coming in. But when I came in, I basically promised them and delivered with new black top, new landscaping, new planting of trees, and I never had an issue with them. They always extended my, my conditional use every year, until the property was, was sold to somebody else. And now they're going through conditional use. So I can guarantee that if I do get this, that they will be, the cars will be in, in a proper parking stalls, in the parking lot, and they, uh, we will reconfigure how, how the cars will be displayed. Instead of being displayed how they are now, it'll be displayed along the Washington Street, yeah, yeah.
And you're gonna follow our sign ordinance?
Yes.
And we're not gonna put those flappy used car signs out there in the wind?
I never had any of those in Beach Park. I won't have them there in Waukegan.
For our property, for, I mean, a conditional use, how many cars was it, twenty-five?
I have, I have a space for twenty-four.
Twenty-four?
On, uh, uh, that's a mix between display and customer parking. And I have, like I said, I, behind the shop, I have a fenced-in area. I can probably fit six cars back there, and I can figure another, maybe eight to ten in, inside the building, on lifts and in the storage, depending on the size.
I wanna work with you.
I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
But I, I, you know, I... It's difficult when you see so many that, I especially have in my ward, and it's been difficult to get compliance out of the owners. You know, they say that, okay, we're gonna, or they will clean it up for a minute, and then they'll go back to the usual parking on the street and, and, you know, so many cars that you can't even move them. You have to move a hundred cars before you could get one out, and it's just, it just... And, and like Alderman Florian said, it's on the main streets.
Yeah.
You know?
When you guys issue conditional use, is it, do I have to come back every year, or is it permanent, or how does that work?
As long as you're compliant and you, or you're properly licensed, and stay in compliance with all of the conditions, including all of the city codes, then it just renews every year with your business license renewal.
Can I have a stipulation that after the first year, you can reevaluate and take it away?
We have that as one of the conditions that we can reevaluate at any point in time.
Okay, I'd be, I'd be open to that. That way, you know, you keep, you keep me honest, you know, which I will be.
Well, I'll, I'll pull the holdover then.
Well, it's your prerogative, so. That sounds good. I think we need to vote on it, though, right?
Mr. Chairman, I'm not on this committee, but this is my ward, okay? My suggestion on this, I haven't yet to speak to the owner or anything like that. It's on the second ward. I, I feel there's just, I mean, too many dealerships as it is, and then it is the issues with Alderman Florian, Alderman Newsom, what's going on with too many cars, and it's right next to Mendel Hospital. I think I'll take a look at it, but I really don't like the idea, so I'd be happy if it holds over.
Okay, it sounds like we're gonna vote on whether to hold it over. The broader discussion can certainly take place. Thank you for weighing in, if it goes to, or when it goes to City Council, but in the meantime, I think we're gonna vote on Alderman Newsom's motion to hold it over.
So the property before I bought it used to be a box truck rental and they did repairs.
Right, right.
Yeah, so, so in, in, in box truck rentals and, and repair... Yeah, so in box truck rentals and repair, being able to sell nicer cars, you know, no rust, not fixing, I think it would be a much better use for that, for the property, you know?
I mean, you might be able to argue that cars for sale look a lot better than cars that are being repaired. And if it's already a car repair station or operation, it might actually improve the aesthetic of the property, but nonetheless, it sounds like we're gonna...
Right, with respect to the Alderman of the ward, he wants to take a look at the property as well, so, I'm, you know, I'll hold over until the October second? Was it October second meeting? And then that way, he'll have a chance to come over, take a look. I myself would like to take a look as well and check out the property up in Beach Park.
Can I ask just a quick question, procedurally? If we voted on it tonight, it still has to go to City Council in two weeks, right? And then, and within those two weeks?
You're voting to hold it in committee.
Oh, right, but if we didn't vote on that?
If the motion failed, for instance, it would still go forward to council with a negative recommendation.
Sure, but it would go forward to council in two weeks at the next meeting. So within those two weeks, there might be adequate time to go out and check it out. And perhaps we could vote on it tonight, take the two weeks to go look at it, and then kick it back for, obviously, the final vote at City Council.
Well, if we did to, I take away the holdover, and we vote to approve it tonight, it doesn't go to the council for two weeks anyway. Is that what, it won't go to the full council until two weeks?
It would go on to the next, is there gonna be a committee meeting in two weeks?
Eighteenth.
There's a special community development committee meeting. So at that time, it wouldn't necessarily have to go to council. It could stay in committee, too.
So it would be on that?
It could go to council that night.
So if you wanted to hold it in committee, you could hold it to the special meeting on September eighteenth. So it would be a two-week holdover, but in committee?
And if you, regardless of whether it passed or failed, it would go on to City Council meeting in two weeks.
In two weeks.
So I guess my recommendation, and it's not to step on your toes, Alderman Newsom, I'll follow your lead on this. But I think that if you just wanna go out and see it and maybe have an additional meeting, maybe if that could be accomplished in two weeks, then we're not delaying the timeline.
Right, right. Two weeks, Alderman?
I'm fine with that.
Okay, can you make accommodations to give some of the other persons a tour of the property or answer any questions within the next two weeks?
Of course, of course.
Okay.
All right, I'll remove the holdover, and we can just vote.
No, we can.
Yeah, okay.
And then it'll go to the next meeting anyway?
To council.
It's actually Ward nine, Alderman Guzman. I looked on the map.
I think after that...
Okay, roll call, please.
But anyway, we all need to be on the same page, so it doesn't matter.
Roll call, okay.
I'm sorry, did you say my name?
No, I just wanted to make sure that I have the motion and second right, since it's now not the, it is the original vote, it's not the holdover. So that was motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Hayes.
Who was, yes.
Okay, so we're standing with them. Okay, thank you. Alderman Florian?
So we're voting on the original motion?
The original motion.
I'm gonna say no.
Alderman Donanworth?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Chairman Hayes?
Aye. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, item agenda, our agenda item, we have the H. It's a motion to adopt an ordinance increasing the number of Class E restaurant liquor licenses by one, La, I'm gonna get this wrong, La Haiba LLC at one twenty North Genesee Street?
I made the motion.
I didn't quite get that. Is that your motion?
Yes.
Okay, we got a first from Alderman Turner, a second?
Second.
Alderman Donanworth, is anybody here? Okay, come on up, if you could introduce yourself for us.
Hello, my name is Daniel Ordunu. I'm the manager for the La Haiba Restaurant.
So I said it correctly, huh?
Yeah.
Outstanding, okay. Any questions? Okay, we don't have any questions for you, but thank you for being here.
Thanks.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Florian?
Aye.
Alderman Donanworth?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Newsom?
Nay.
Chairman Hayes?
Aye. Number six is reports, communications, and information. There being none, can I have a motion and a second to adjourn at six oh four? Okay, first from Alderman Florian, second from Alderman Newsom. We are adjourned at six oh four, thank you. Oh, wait, do we need a? First, no, we got a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, any opposed? Nope.
Operations and Oversight Committee meeting on Tuesday, September 5th at 2023 at 6:08 PM. Roll call, please.
Alderman Bolton.
Present.
Alderman Newsome.
Present.
Alderman Felix.
Present.
Alderman Martinez. Chairperson Florian.
Present. Thank you, sir. Are there any public comments for this meeting? Okay. I need a first, item D, I need a first and second motion to approve the minutes of the Government Operations and Oversight Committee meeting held on August 7th, 2023. Thank you, Alderman.
Second, I second.
Thank you, lady, ladies. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. New business, item A, I need a first and second motion to approve a settlement and release of all claims for engineering and department employee.
All motion.
Thank you, gentlemen. Any questions to this motion? Okay. Roll call, please.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Felix.
Aye.
Alderman Martinez. Chairperson Florian.
Aye. I need a first, item B, I need a first and second motion to approve a resolution to purchase Chevy Tahoe for an amount not to exceed $200,000 for the Risk Management and Public Works Department.
I have questions on this one.
We need to do the first and second first, and then we can do questions.
I so moved.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Felix?
Yes, so I just wanted to make sure, I know that we went over this on the briefing, but if we can have the reason as to why we're wanting to buy this again, because something came up in my mind, but I wanted to make sure, I don't know, George, if you can let us know, or... Why are we gonna buy these cars? For what reason?
Well, for risk, we're looking at it because it's a bigger vehicle. We currently drive a Ford Torres as a vehicle, a really small car, and it's hard to get in and out of, myself is one. And we also increased the size of our staff to three now, and this vehicle allows to go to trainings together, bring our training supplies from this building to Public Works when we're doing safety training. And we're gonna be out doing ADA assessments of our sidewalks and our street crossings, and it's just a bigger vehicle that will be more noticeable and discreet as we're doing that, provide us with the safety of the vehicle. And Public Works wanted to use them for... They take multiple staff members to drug testing on a quarterly basis for their drug testing, and they also take interns around to different locations for their assignments. And a bigger vehicle allow them, currently they're using pickup trucks to do that, and it takes multiple trips for them to get people where they need to go, and this will allow them to get quicker. And I do believe it also allow the pickup trucks will be assigned to staff instead of to Chris and his assistant.
And that would be correct.
I have one more comment. I have to make sure that I did bring this up in the briefing, thank you for asking. We currently have staff using their personal vehicles. So they're taking all of these containers and things that they're taking to the water plant, Public Works and different internal facilities, they're transporting these things in their personal vehicles. And that's another thing that we're trying to avoid and discontinue. Sorry about that.
And just to clarify what Chief of Staff was saying, my vehicle that I have will be pushed down to my staff and engineering staff so that they can be able to utilize it in regards to the staff using their personal vehicles.
And if I could add to that, speaking with them in reference to that, that is kind of crossing boundaries when you're using your own personal vehicle. So reiterating the point, they should not be using or transporting items concerning work in their personal vehicles.
The reason why I wanted to bring it up, because one of the things that was brought up is to, when we have visitors, we would be able to use them for, to move them around, and you know, when I heard that, I was like, well, maybe these, the Tahos is probably not the best thing for that purposes, maybe we should get something like a small little bus to move our people around. That's the only reason why, because that was brought up, where we'll be taking our people around and whatnot for whenever we have visitors. For example, we had our sister city come over and we had to use whatever, someone else's bus, we had to ask for it. So that's the only reason that came up, instead of, wanted to make sure that, you know, we actually have, we're not just purchasing cars for no reason, you know, especially if we do... Do we have, how many, how many, how many people can be in these cars, like in this, like Tahoe, one Tahoe?
They have seating for eight in the Tahoe.
For eight? Yes.
I'm sorry, Alderman, you are correct. We did have our planning and zoning team. Our director was bringing on more staff. I want to make sure everyone's hearing it, just in case I didn't cover it during your briefing. We did have planning and zoning team, new employees coming on to join our team, and she wanted to give a tour of the city. And we actually had to reach out to our Waukegan Township and our Waukegan Park District and ask them for their smaller bus to take them around for those tours. That is what Alderman Felix is referencing. But yes, we did have to do that. We did search for a large enough vehicle for them, and there were some others that were visiting our city, where we also had to reach out to our township and our park district to, again, attempt to use their vehicles. It comes into play, and our risk manager may speak on this, our liability. We are another government agency, but it's hard to get these other organizations to allow someone that's not part of their staff to drive their vehicles. So in some cases, they would have had to drive us around for those tours.
They should always drive us around, because we're not insured to drive a school bus. Our insurance does not cover any type of bus.
Okay. Just, and so, and it's three of them, right? Three Tahos?
Correct.
Looking at three Tahos, so it'd be Public Works, Risk Management?
Two will be for Public Works and one for Risk Management.
Okay. Do you think this is a good use of this, this, well, I mean, I want to make sure that I do say this, I do want to make sure that you guys are comfortable, have a vehicle that, you know, you guys can use around, but I just want to make sure that this is something that is worth spending our money in. You know, just, we're just buying three cars, you know, for, is it also gonna just be in the city? Or will it be taken home, or how does that work?
I know mine will be just in the city, won't be taken home. I'm not sure about Public Works, if the director takes theirs home or not.
I have one, just curious. Will the other departments be able to use these vehicles, or is it strictly just for this department?
The City Hall one, they'll be able to use. I do believe the ones for Public Works will be disassigned to the director and assistant superintendent.
Correct.
Thank you.
I have a question. When I read the email, it seems that it's gonna be used for multi-purposes. With dignitaries and, you know, whatever issue we have with the city, but, you know, I think it's a great idea. That's something that is needed. I'm sure if it's under your hands, Mr. Garland, you will assure that it will be taken care of with the cleaners and all that stuff. So I trust you with that, because that, you know, it's something that we have to consider also, but I think it's a good idea.
I don't have any other questions. I don't have any more other questions.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Felix.
Aye.
Alderman Martinez.
Aye.
Chairperson Florian.
Aye. Thank you, sir. Motion passes. There is no old business, no reports in communications. We need a first and second to adjourn at 6:17. We already had that at the beginning of the meeting. No, 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 this is just a committee meeting. You don't have to sign in. The actual council meeting isn't till seven. Okay, so what's, Kelly, can you help me out?
Are you here for City Council, or are you here for a committee meeting?
I am here for the Government Operations and Oversight.
Okay. Why don't you come up and we'll just give her a couple of minutes?
Okay.
Okay, wait, three minutes.
Sorry.
My name is Andrea Moore. This is regarding, I guess, a personnel concern. I just heard throughout the last committee meeting that the committee passed, or, you know, agreed to allow bare development to make major changes, I guess, based off of just the city planning. And they mentioned some very important things like what a RAD is, or that it was under a RAD project, which would make their request a violation of such. I have given numerous, numerous notices to the full board about the Waukegan Housing Authority and their development efforts, and how they have horribly been out of regulation and/or may align with maybe waste fraud and abuse. And as far as the tenants would go, coercion, intimidation, or retaliation. Those persons have a right to return to where they once lived, to make it where now they live somewhere else. And that's just a small scope of what you just allowed bare development to do, which is not the, they're not the owner. They are partial owner. So the Waukegan Housing Authority, which is something that was brought to the city or is signed up on the city by resolution, and that the full board and/or the committees actually appoint the board members, they should be presenting that, because they're the ones who understand or should understand HUD regulation or federal regulation, and not bare development, which is a private entity that's out of state, quite honestly. But because the Waukegan Housing Authority is, I don't know, just, they're not accountable, they're not held accountable. It brings me to my next thing. The mayor is responsible for appointing the board members. I myself have personally requested that she remove all board members. I think the one resident council or commissioner has been such for 25 years. And she's supposed to be voted by her peers. I almost can bet that there's no record that was ever given to the city of Waukegan or any official that shows that that vote or a voting process took place. And again, Eleanor Murkey, Ms. Olbison, they have been commissioners for decades. And they're, the rollover, the appointment, I have not seen any record of any mayor actually letting the public know that they can apply for appointment. And they are terribly out of regulation, and they're the persons that are responsible for hiring the executive director that when someone like myself establishes so officials that people are suffering because of their poor business choices, that then they'll tell me to go to said person. But yet, the city of Waukegan has not been responsible for the resolution that I cannot find record of on the public site, and/or the fact that they appoint the board members who should actually be presenting to the city in any capacity.
Just for clarification, we voted to put that item on the City Council agenda only. So it will be voted on by the whole council. So I would encourage you to speak again regarding that. Because... I did, I did, but... We can't have a back and forth.
Is that we've only had during my term, one reapo, or not reapportment, a chance for somebody to be on that board. And that was actually Mr. Martinez was up, and I did rotate. And he'll tell you that, that, just to give a change. But until their term is up, and I am notified, you can't just pull them from the board.
I can't engage. I can't, they have to do that. I've just said that we will do reapportments when they come up, but so that the Aldermen know that those reapportments are set at certain time periods. And unless there was something that was proven that there was a reason they couldn't be there, we can't just do that. But we can rotate, and we do rotate, at least I have, when those times have come up. And again, I think Alderman Martinez can testify to that. Okay, thank you, Mayor.
May I ask one question, please?
Regarding what's been on the agenda, or what's just been said?
What's been said by this young lady?
Can we wait and talk about it when it's on the City Council agenda?
Sure, or I can ask her personally.
Well, it's not on tonight, but when it's on the City Council agenda.
No, I can just talk to her personally. Thank you.
Thank you. So adjournment, I need a first and second motion to adjourn at 6:23.
I so moved.
So, second.
Thank you, ladies. Any, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Okay, we have Alderman Bolton.
Present.
Alderman Donenworth.
Here.
Alderman Guzman.
Present.
Alderman Hayes.
Present.
And Mayor Taylor.
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. There being no new business, we'll go to old business. I don't know that we're gonna get through all of these tonight, because I want to keep council on schedule. But if I could have permission, the ones that are actually up for ordinances, A, B, H, and I, could we hear those first, and then do the discussion on the other ones? Are you guys okay with that? If we did those four first?
Fine with me. Do you need a motion?
Okay. Item A, can I have a first and a second? For item A.
First.
Okay, I need a second.
Second.
Okay, so that was Alderman Hayes and second, Donenworth. This is an ordinance amending the Waukegan Code of Ordinances to adopt by reference the most recent version of the Lake County Watershed Development Ordinance. I think you went through this during your automatic briefings. This is something that needs to be decided, I believe, before the next City Council meeting. And this is an engineering one, and we do not have our engineer here tonight. But I will, Kelly and I will try and answer any questions we can on it. Are there questions to this motion? Okay, being no, oh, being no questions, roll call, please.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Donenworth.
Aye.
Alderman Guzman.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
And Chair Taylor.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item B, an ordinance amending Section 21-122 of the Code of Ordinances adding limited parking in front of home daycare centers. I think we talked about this one in the past, that it cannot be for a specific ward. It has to be an ordinance for the whole city. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't get a first and a second. I'm sorry. First?
So moved.
Is that Alderman Guzman?
Yeah. A second?
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Alderman Bolton.
So this would be affecting about, what did we say, about 300 parking spots throughout the city? Any questions to the motion?
I just have a quick comment. Could I?
Yes.
Offer a comment? Okay, so thank you for identifying the 300 parking spots. It seems to me that this is a resolution for one person at a pretty significant expense to the entire cit, to the entire city. I'm not sure how it's gonna be enforced, if we even have the resources to enforce it. And by carving out parking spots in front of this particular daycare, it means we have to do it in front of every daycare. And it will cause parking issues, concerns, and confusion for neighbors in all of these neighborhoods that have at-home daycares. So my concern is, while we may be solving one person's problem, which is terrific, we are creating problems for people throughout the city. But also, there's expense for installing these signs. It looks like it's $80 a sign, costs about $11,600. And then we need to allocate staff and code enforcement, police potentially, to enforce this. And then if we get a neighbor who's then parking during these hours in front of a daycare, then that neighbor's gonna be ticketed. I think parking, it's no secret, has been confusing in the city at best. And this is just gonna add additional confusion and cost to the city. So I frankly don't see any reason why we should pass this ordinance.
Can, can...
I'm not on a committee, but can I?
Sure.
I believe, according to this ordinance, this will be carried out just like someone that wants to get a handicap parking in front of their home. They would have to apply for it. We're not just gonna go out and put up a sign in front of every daycare. They would have to apply for this, that it's a hardship for their daycare. That's the only way they could get it. And I believe there is a fee for the handicap. Is there gonna be a fee for this?
Alderman, if I may, that's not, that was not contemplated in the ordinance as amended on the agenda tonight.
You mean the fee wasn't contemplated, or the hardship application?
No fee, and I don't...
No fee?
So the way that the ordinance, it's amending the parking restriction ordinance to add home daycare drop-off and pickup, because that's where logically would fit in the code. And right now, it would be amended to state, or proposed amendment would be, owners of home daycare centers may apply to the licensing division of the Building Department to obtain a restricted parking sign in front of their building. Where a restricted parking sign is posted in front of a home daycare, parking is prohibited during the designated hours as set forth herein.
So they would actually have to apply for it?
Yes.
I'm sorry, what did you say? Repeat that, please, Alderman Newsome.
No, they, according to this ordinance, it would be carried out just like a handicap parking request. If someone had an issue with this, then they would apply for the daycare sign in front of their home. We're not just gonna go out and put a free parking space, or not a free, but just designate a free space in front of every home daycare. They would have to apply if they have a hardship and needed this service.
I agree, because some daycares are saying they don't want this.
They don't need it, yeah.
And so if they did want it, I hear you say they have to apply.
Yeah.
Okay.
There should be a fee. We should not pay. They should cover it. They want the spot, there's gonna be a fee. You gotta pay. It's not for free.
I think, yeah, I think that's a really good point. Alderman Newsome, your, Alderman Newsome, your point's a good one as well. You know, if you want dedicated parking, I think you gotta go get brick and mortar retail storefront space. We're talking neighborhoods, and yes, you have a home-based business, I understand that, but it doesn't mean that you should be able to take away parking spaces from your neighbors. So that's my reservation here, in addition to the cost, and maybe that's something that could be worked around. It just seems that if we're gonna add additional parking restrictions within the neighborhood, it's just gonna cause some frustration and confusion. And if people, to my first point, want the dedicated space, there's plenty of space in the city of Waukegan that they can lease that has a dedicated parking lot, which would ensure that they have ample parking.
One more thing. There needs to be also some kind of deposit, so when they're done, so we can pull it. Because they cannot just stay there, and then they, all of a sudden, they go bankrupt or something happens, and then they're no longer a daycare, and then all of a sudden, they leave, and then we're not informed of it or anything like that. We need to know so we can remove this. And not, somebody else is using it for their pleasure or leisure.
So if I could just add some comment, Mayor Taylor, for, just from procedural aspect. So, one, we need, you know, if the committee wants to approve the ordinance, it most logically fits in the restricted parking ordinance. It doesn't currently have a fee schedule. So then the fee schedule ordinance, that I believe the licensing department uses for various fees, would have to be amended separately. Because I don't think it would make sense here from a procedural standpoint to also list in the same ordinance section what the fee is. Because I believe, and Commissioner Solis, I see is here, can speak to the licensing fee schedule and how that is updated every year.
Well, if we need a motion, all motion to amend.
Wait, wait, can I, I have something I'd like to say before you change the motion. Is that...
Good evening, everyone. So the question was, if we have a separate fee schedule, and yes, the business licenses do have a separate fee schedule. So a fee to add for this parking could be added to this, rather than inside the ordinance itself. That way, we could change the fee schedule anytime we want, or change the ordinance, vice versa. Any other questions for...
Sure. All right, well, I'll ask it, because it was part of this. What is the current fee for the handicap parking? Is it 75, do you remember?
Well, I don't remember for that. I got it, I'm sorry. I can look it up, though, if I can.
Yeah. Can you look that up for us? We, I think it's 75 off the top of my head, but I'm not 100% sure of that. And so I'm assuming that's gonna be $75 per space then, because that's what it is for a handicap space. And if you want two, then it's 150. Alderman Florian?
Thank you, Mayor. My question is about enforcement of this. So we've already got an alternate parking ordinance that, sorry to say, barely gets enforced. Now we're gonna add a new parking requirement throughout the city that's a certain time of day, 5:00 AM to 10:00 AM, which seems like a very long drop-off period to me. And then the afternoon time ends at 5:00. Well, most, like, I work till 7:00. Like, everyone's off before 5:00 o'clock in the world out there. I thought the times were just weird. It's like, it's 5:00 AM to 10:00 AM, and then again, like, 2:00 to 5:00 or some... I mean, it's a good part of the whole day. I'm just curious how we're gonna enforce this.
The reality of it is, it would not be able to be enforced, because it would be hard to determine if it's a daycare, like, a person dropping off for daycare.
to determine if it's a daycare, like, if a, um, person dropping off for daycare, and, like, they're, say they're not a Waukegan resident, how do we track that down and know that that belongs to that daycare? Unless they're gonna provide us a list of everybody's license plates, which would be something that most people are reluctant to do, I don't see that you could really enforce that.
So, I guess my question then is, why are we putting an ordinance out that's not gonna get enforced anyway?
Well, we have a number of those. So, I mean, I'm just saying, if we're gonna revamp it, we have to be realistic about what can we do and not do. Enforcement, I, I'll ask the police to come up and talk, but I believe it would be almost impossible to do enforcement when you can't track the license plate specific to that daycare.
Just also say that the, the people that apply for the home daycares, they, they're, they should be assessing their parking needs and their other needs of their home-based business at the time. And if they don't have adequate parking, then, that, that needs to be considered at the time that they apply or contemplate creating the business. To Alderman Florian's point, and to my earlier points, we're just, we're creating more confusion, and we're creating more things that need to be enforced. If they're not enforced, people are gonna come before us and say, well, you don't enforce this ordinance, so why are you enforcing this one? Or, police need to come out and enforce this new daycare parking ordinance. It's, it's just, it's gonna create way more problems than it's gonna solve, and that's not what we need to be doing, for everybody throughout the city.
And can I just make one more point?
Well, let me call on Commissioner Solis.
I'm sorry, so the ordinance for the, it's seventy-five dollars, it's, uh, chapter twenty-two, section one-eighteen point one, letter E. It's seventy-five dollars for the handicap, uh, permits.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Florian?
When this was originally brought to us, this was for one daycare, we found out we can't do it just for one, but the, the original people, they have a driveway. They are refusing to move their cars out of their driveway to make it easier for their customers, 'cause they don't wanna do that. Again, I'll go back and say, I park in the spot farthest away from my door, because I try to make it as easy for my customers as possible. Their customers are the people dropping off the kids for daycare. Move your damn cars out of the driveway and let your, let your customers use your driveway. It's not a difficult thing, people. I, I don't get it.
Any other questions or comments? Yes.
Uh, I do. If it's going to come to this, and it's going to a vote, seventy-five dollars is just way, way, way too low, maybe triple it or quadruple it.
We could vote it down, and then it could be brought back if somebody wants to impose some sort of fine, but as presented to us, it sounds like we can just, we can vote no, and it could be reconsidered at some point in the future if it wants to be amended.
If I could just mention about the enforcement, and, um, I know that we have certain areas, certain neighborhoods with resident parking by permit only. I saw a sign recently down on Butrick, and I think that's in the fourth ward. You'd implement the same kind of policy, you know, give, you know, they apply for the space as described, just as they would a, a handicap parking space, and then we issue, you know, give them five or ten p- by permit only stickers for their customers, right? So, uh, when parking enforcement is out in the neighborhoods and they see a car in that space, if they don't have the permit sticker in their window, they get a ticket.
So that's an additional cost that we would have to pass on?
Minimal cost, Mayor, it's not gonna cost too much.
Um, can I have somebody from the police talk, I mean? I just wanna know, does the police see this as a problem or not?
Um, potentially, yeah, because, you know, short of a permit parking sticker, how would we enforce it? And if my wife drops the kid off instead of me, the sticker's on my car but not on my wife's car, then we write them a ticket, and yet they were dropping them off, it could be an issue. The only thing I could see enforcement-wise is if the daycare called us to say, hey, somebody's in our spot that they weren't supposed to be, then the police can respond in an non-emergency situation, but as far as like, on-view enforcement, it'd be very difficult without any kind of permit. And then again, with the permits, you know, you'd have to issue enough to where, you know, the, the person going there would have that right permit on the car, otherwise, again, we're gonna be ticketing people that we shouldn't be ticketing.
I have a question, I'm not part of this committee, but, uh, wouldn't it be just as simple as, like, when you, when you're in downtown, and it says, you know, only certain amount of parking, uh, otherwise, there's fines? And people seem to avoid these areas when there's signs like that. I think, I don't think this is a super big complicated puzzle. We, if we add, if they apply for it, not everyone wants it, right? So if we, they apply for it, they give them the space, they have a sign, and, I mean, people for the most part avoid if it has specific, uh, the, you know, uh, restrictions. So, it's not a big puzzle. I think, you know, it, it, it wouldn't be a bad thing, yeah. The whole part where police, they're calling police to, um, because they're not, they're parking there, that could be an issue, but, um, for the most part, you know, when you go downtown, people avoid parking certain spaces if there's a sign there, and that's the whole point of it. You know, it's not, I don't think it's gonna, um, we're, we're, we're asking the police to enforce it, you know, um, for the most part, people will avoid these, these spaces. That's my opinion in terms of-
I think that's true better in downtown, though, than it is in residential neighborhoods.
I don't know, do we, we don't know?
Yeah. Um, if we did permits, you'd almost have to, like, rotate those every six months, because you may be with that daycare for now, but then in six months' time, and you don't want people keeping permits that shouldn't have them, you know what I mean? So that would be the problem with permits, if, you know, or stickers, I mean, like, if we did it that way.
We had, we had those with the city in our city lots for a while, and we did away with that. And we did, we'd have to go through every six months to a year, change the permit colors to at least know that it's not an old permit, it's a new permit, and stuff like that. But I would think from an on-view standpoint, you know, like you were saying, people would be deterred, but at the same time, it's in a residential neighborhood where the squad carts aren't traveling as much, whereas downtown, they're traveling quite a bit more often. In a neighborhood, people might feel comfortable thinking that a squad cart's not gonna come around, and they may take that chance, versus a, a public street.
Um, any other questions to this? Roll call, please. Alderman Bolton?
No.
Alderman Donan Worth?
Aye.
Alderman Guzman?
Aye.
Alderman Hayes?
No.
Mayor Taylor?
No.
The ordinance fails.
Okay, the next one is, um, H. Can I have a first and a second?
It still goes to the council, with a negative recommendation.
Yeah, but not to, it doesn't go tonight.
Not tonight.
You got a first, Mayor.
Um, a first, Alderman Hayes, a second on H.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton? This is an ordinance to amend chapter nine of the city code to remove the adoption of the nineteen ninety-one National Fire Code, and to amend certain license fees. Is the fire chief here? First off, I'll ask, are there any questions to this?
Yes. Uh, amend license fees. What do, what do we amend, raising or lowering? What is the cost now?
They're being lowered.
No. How much?
Most of them are going from two-fifty down to one-hundred. It's gonna be the same as the building contractor registration fees is why, why we're lowering them.
Why are we lowering them?
Like I just-
How long have they-
Like I just said, sir, it's, it's to make them the exact same as the contractor registration fees.
So how long has they been this way?
I can't answer that question.
So it's been a very, very long time?
Correct.
So, since prices are not going up, why, why is it going down instead of up?
Uh, this information is coming from our fire marshal, who's the one that did it, and he said, again, it is just to match what our building contractors pay, to have it one exact same price.
Sorry, no.
I got a question for you.
Sir?
Okay, so, some of the items that are listed would be, like, number one says flammable liquid tanks, maybe?
Correct.
Okay, so it's being reduced from two-fifty to one-hundred?
Yes, sir.
What goes into licensing a flammable liquid tank?
Uh, it has to be inspected by the state, and then we just give them a license every year to have it.
Okay, so the state incurs the time associated with inspecting whatever the tank may be?
Correct.
And then we just issue the paper license?
Correct.
Okay. So-
It is not labor-intensive by any means.
Okay.
It's paperwork.
Okay, so while we're reducing the fee, our workload is not increasing, it's-
Correct.
By any measure?
Standing exactly the same, yes, sir.
Okay, and is this in an effort to just be, I guess, let me ask this question, forgive me for being naive, who's, who's applying for these types of licenses?
Different businesses and towns, uh, body shops, for example, have a flammable, flammable liquid tank, um, if they have oil stored there, uh, somebody along those lines.
Okay, and for each of the items that are listed on here, we don't have to go through all of them, but is that, is it all similarly inspected by the state, and then we issue the license?
Correct.
Okay, so-
Certain ones, like fire extinguishers, obviously comes from us, things, things along those lines. Um, extinguishing systems are for, like, a hood-and-duck system for a restaurant.
Okay.
So whereas, we will inspect that, but we are doing normal inspections as we always do.
Okay, so the workload's not changing for the fire department?
Correct.
Okay, and it seems to me, correct me if I'm wrong, well, maybe it's more of an opinion, but we're effectively just reducing the fees for these businesses, the workload's not gonna change?
Correct.
And it does, at least, seem on its face to be more business-friendly?
More business-friendly is exactly right.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Anybody else?
Mayor, I know I'm not on the committee, but can I ask him a question?
Sure.
Um, h- how many of these roughly do you do? Do you have any idea?
I don't, I'm sorry, I don't have that answer. I can get that information to you.
Is it hundreds, or is it?
I, not hun- it depends on which one it is, um, so extinguishing systems, again, goes back to restaurants have them, so there are a lot of restaurants in town.
Almost every restaurant would have them.
Correct. Um, as opposed to, uh, liquefied petroleum tanks, very, very few for those. So it just depends on which one it is, but again, I can get you those numbers, I do not have them with me.
Okay, are you concerned about this affecting your budget?
Not one bit.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. Anybody else?
Any other questions? Okay, roll call, please. Alderman Bolton?
Aye.
Alderman Donan Worth?
Aye.
Alderman Guzman?
No.
Alderman Hayes?
Aye.
Mayor Taylor?
Aye.
The motion passes.
Okay, for item I, um, can I have a first and a second?
First.
A second. Uh, Alderman Hayes and Alderman Bolton, and that is an ordinance amending section six dash seven-two of the city code regarding the National Electric Code. Um, and I think, um, well, first off, are there any questions to this? Because you've all heard about this in the briefings. Any questions to this motion? Okay, there being none, roll call, please.
Alderman Bolton?
Aye.
Alderman Donan Worth?
Aye.
Alderman Guzman?
Aye.
Alderman Hayes?
Aye.
Mayor Taylor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Um, the items that are up for discussion, um, I'm going to see if we can put those on a committee of the whole, in around, we're looking at around March nineteenth for a committee of the whole meeting. Or, I'm sorry, October, October. Um, this month, as you know, we have the IML conference, and we have, um, quite a few other things, um, the chambers is getting, um, new, or being updated for, um, the mics and stuff. So if we could do it, um, that October nineteenth, at least mark your calendars for that, and then please get back to me if that would work.
Mayor, this is, I mean, this is, some of this stuff has already been held over. It has to move forward, this is the, this'll be the second time.
Okay.
Okay, so, motion to move forward.
Okay. Go ahead, Kelly.
Well, there's, okay, there's two things. For any item that's not new, I believe Alderman Guzman is correct. For new items coming in, the mayor can refer them to the proper committee. These are on committee, so I think what I would say, um, for a procedural, if, if these are to be moved, I think at this point that would have to happen by a vote, uh, is to the new items. The, the old items, I think you're correct, Alderman, um, they sh- those should stay in the committee and be considered in the committee.
Exactly.
Um, okay, um, I just want to see if we can do the discussions at the next council meeting, because I don't wanna hold the council meeting over for residents who've come here on time, and our discussions seem to take a long time. The other thing is, we put all these in code appeals and negotiations, but you're seeing everybody wants to really talk, and that would be better if we did it in a committee of the whole, rather than code revisions, which is how we traditionally handled it. But we can do these, the discussion, at the next council meeting, on the twenty, or, on the eighteenth.
It's already held over, um, over a month now.
Aren't these all just discussion items?
They're all discussion items. They're, they're discussion, so, the other thing that could happen too, because there's no action that's gonna be taken, we could start the discussion and see how far we get, and then continue the rest of the next meeting. We could set a time limit on the discussion items.
Okay, well, city council is supposed to start in seven minutes, so is there anybody who wants to bring up any of these for a discussion, and how about we go until seven, and we take a couple-minute break, and then we come back for the council meeting? Which is the most, or, you know, what, who's is most urgent? I'm willing to hold mine over, the balloon stuff.
I, 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 can I?
Yes.
I'm not on this committee, but with the noise ordinance that I brought forth, and, um, I continue to have problems with this, uh, there was some information that was attached to this, um, I would suggest that we put it, um, well, bring it forth with an ordinance that we copy the Chicago ordinance, and have all the aldermen take a look at that, and go with the fines that Chicago has, the first one being five hundred dollars, the second one, uh, if they're called out again, within the same year, it would be a thousand dollars. Maybe we can curtail some of this noise, because I know that once an officer goes out, uh, and asks a person to lower their music, they will raise it again after the police leaves. So if we put something in place where, uh, the officers can, you know, will know that, okay, this is my second time out, you will be issued a citation the first time, the second time, and subsequent times, that it'll be, uh, a fine given, and then maybe we can curtail some of this noise.
Okay.
I, I, I'm sorry, but can I, I'm not in this committee, but I, you know, today was, excuse me, over the weekend was a prime example, uh, we had, I heard nine-one-one had ther- inundated with so many calls of disturbances. I myself-
Your microphone, we can't hear you.
I, I myself went out on two occasions, one on Flossmore and Nemory Court, on my own, they did turn the music down, but from my understanding, and I had asked Chief Navarro, I don't know if he's here or not, for the statistics, but what, what were the numbers for the weekend with so many calls? So, that is a big problem, you know, and these people, whoever is the persons who are doing this, they need, they need to be, uh, you know, they need to be fined. And with that money that we do get, we oughta put that in there to educate our, our, our citizens that, hey, let them know that these are the consequences that you would suffer, um, if you are, uh, you know, if you are in violation.
I think there, I think there needs to be a decision made by the committee, either consider the items tonight, perhaps under a time limit, or, you know, hold them over to the next meeting, because it sounds like everybody wants to have at least one item go forward.
Y- yes.
So which item do you wanna send forward? Pick one.
The noise ordinance.
Noise, noise ordinance.
Okay.
Oh, raises.
Okay, if we do the, um, can I have a motion regarding amendments to the noise ordinance to increase fines?
So moved.
Well, no, 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 it's just a discussion item, I-
Oh, I'm sorry, it's a discussion, there's no motion, I'm sorry. So that's the one that you want us to put in motion for the next council meeting? You want that in an actual ordinance form? Okay?
Right, got it. Right, got it.
Um, and let's, the other one that we need to start working on fairly quickly and get into a motion is the overnight on-street parking in Central Business District, because we all know the problems we've had in the downtown area, so can we put that on the next council meeting as well?
We also have item D, salary ordinance for employee regarding step increases, that's been on hold for over a month.
Okay, we'll put that one on the next one.
No, it, I, I would like it discussed now.
Okay, um, we're going to only go for a few minutes though, because like I said, it's not fair to people coming in, so go ahead and say what you'd like to say.
I feel that the, uh, since the, the checkbook is run by the people and the council is the people who are voted in, that's who this should decide if, uh, you get a three-step or four-step or five-step increase, not, uh, a mayor or any other staff or anybody else, that they don't write the checks, we do.
Um, this one I'd prefer to have, um, an HR person, which we are working on, who can have input into this of what other communities do, so that's why I'd like to, um, keep that one if we can, just so we can get our HR person, um, because I think they can give us a little bit different background on that too, a more rounded background.
Okay, this is, we had the old, uh, HR, she could have spoken on this over a month ago, and it was held over.
Uh, had she not talked in briefings? Okay.
Yes, she did. I'm sorry, yes, she did speak on this, I, uh, think she explained it all, how the process works, is that, um, it gives the opportunity to hire new staff, is one portion of this, um, ordinance that allows them, per their qualifications, or with some type of justification, that the mayor does get to start them at the pay, um, agreed upon. For them to be hired, it allows, um, department heads to place staff at a higher step than just one step, per this ordinance, it is an ordinance, um, and that's up to step three, all of these things were explained by our former HR director-
Correct.
And that document, this ordinance, is in board docs also.
Correct, but it should be a recommendation, they should not be able to just say, okay, and then us, us as a city council, write out the check for it, and approve it every other week for it, so the one that should make the final decision is the city council, not a, not anybody else.
Can I just offer a comment, maybe, uh, you know, the, the department heads and the mayor's office, day-to-day operations are not run by the city council, and if we have to wait for city council vote at a committee level and then a full city council to vote on whether we can offer a certain salary to an employee, we will delay at a minimum the hiring of that employee by at least a month, which will probably demonstrate some form of dysfunction to an employee that we're trying to convince to come work for us, so I think if, if we're trying to put our best foot forward, we need to give the department heads and the mayor the authority to hire people who are qualified, and bring them in at whatever salary is warranted, based upon the role, and not bring them before the city council and have a debate on whether their salary is justified or not, these are non-department head positions, if some of them, some are department heads, but I, I don't know why we would delay hiring by a month or six weeks, um, and parade somebody through in front of city council to discuss their salary.
I'm willing to push it right away, but absolutely not, this, department heads and the mayor do not write out the checks, again, we do, it comes out of the city, uh, taxes, and that's why we are elected to, we hold the purse, we herd-
We approve a budget.
Or the wallet, or whichever way you want to say it, so-
I get your point, and you're trying to be fiscally responsible, and I think that's totally reasonable, I'm on board with that, um, but we approve a budget and then we operate within the confines of that budget, so I think it's, it's important to say that we're not making, you know, bi-monthly decisions about what to spend money on and what not to spend money on, it is very much money that has already been allocated for intended purposes, and while we may question those funds or want to make sure we have additional clarity for the public, it's already been budgeted, and the, you know, the prior point is when we hire people, we need to make decisions quickly, we retain headhunting firms to, to find people for us, and we're not going to be able to attract the talent that we need, for example, in a finance director, if it takes an additional six weeks just to get approval to hire the person at the, the pay grade which is warranted, so I think, my personal opinion is that, you, like, your heart, your heart and mind are in the right place on this, I just think that practically speaking, it's not an efficient way to go about hiring people.
The previous council approved the budget, not the current one.
Um, also, can I add one other thing, also in support, the mayor is, um, acting fiscally responsible, she has been told by both recruiters that our starting pay is too low, and the mayor has restrained that we're going to stay within those steps, and she bargains with each recruiting candidate to bring on the best at a, um, pay scale that is appropriate, so those, and, uh, against the recommendations of our recruiters, the mayor is attempting, when she's sitting in these meetings, to bargain for the best price, so that is not just a given, we give them what they want, the mayor does take that in consideration, their qualifications and the justification for them to get the negotiated price, and as the alderman said, yes, our timelines are short when we're bringing on these different individuals, because the candidates aren't just looking here at the city of Waukegan, they are looking other places, because the finance director's position is in demand, HR is in demand, as you've seen with our former HR director.
Okay, Noel, would you like to come up, please?
Thank you, um, I would echo Alderman Hayes' comments, and I would add to that, that I experienced last year, um, I had a candidate to whom I offered a position, and I was not able to hire that candidate because our hiring was too restrictive, I needed to be able to give them one additional step above what our limit was, I would have been able to hire a highly qualified candidate as part of the planning team, but was not able to bring them on because our current ordinance is too restrictive, the department heads for the city of Waukegan make incredible efforts to be fiscally responsible, we all spend a great deal of time in our budgeting processes, we know our staff, we know our demands, we know our audience, and we need to pay our staff at competitive wages if we want to have good people, it's not about having bodies in the seats, it's about having brains doing the jobs and performing for our community, Waukegan deserves to have the very best staff, and we all work hard to make sure that we have the very best staff on our teams, and sometimes that means that we need to have a little bit of flexibility, and so maybe we give a staff person an extra step this year, and then they go two or three years without an extra step, that can happen and has happened, but we need to have the flexibility, especially in this hiring market, to bring in people, to be competitive with what other communities are offering, and to attract the best of the best, because Waukegan deserves the best of the best, thank you.
My, my argument is not to give them steps above, or pay them what they're worth, or how much the, uh, department heads or whoever, uh, HR recommends, okay, so if HR recommends this person should make a hundred thirty thousand plus three weeks vacation, or blah blah this, or blah blah that, it should be our decision, you guys just give the recommendation, that is it, and then we could just go, sure, no problem, thank you, have a good day, but-
I want to add, uh, Jose, I'm not in this committee, but, um, it, it, to the argument where it, it can take six weeks, that's not true, the, the mayor can bring something out of the agenda without us, and then we can vote it in, like, if it's a, a recommendation, so it's not going to take that long, like, I don't understand why that, that argument is there, if we, if we all agree and if we wanted to bring it forward, like, some things on the agenda today, we, it were, they were presented, uh, on the briefing, and now they're on the agenda, we're going to vote for it, so it doesn't take that long to vote some of these things in, so that's not an argument we should, we should, uh, say, and what to, what Jose was saying is that we're not wanting to restrict, we're wanting to have, be part of the process as well.
My argument is that you're a legislative body and hiring is an administrative function, and the city's administrators, the department heads should have the ability to do that.
But we hold the purse, you guys do not, you can hire whoever you want, but when it comes down to money, it comes down to us, not you, so let's get that straight.
That's why we go through the budgeting process and get approval for our budgets, and then within our budget-
Like I said, approve with the previous budget, not, previous, uh, council, not this one.
Alderman Guzman, I don't want to argue with you, but that's part of the timing of when elections happen and when aldermen are seated, and it is ideal for the city's operation that the budget get approved before the end of the fiscal year, so that we can start May first, the new fiscal year, with a budget in place, that's more fair to the
taxpayers, it's more fair to the department heads, if we don't have a budget in place at the start of the new fiscal year, we have to go based on the prior year's budget, which in some cases is higher than the new year, it's ideal and much more transparent for the public if there's a budget in place, now unfortunately, in, in your position, you came in after the budget was adopted, if you wish to make an amendment to the budget, I would suggest that would be the more appropriate method to do it, not to start to lean into administrative functions, it's best for the council to stick with legislative functions, and I know I'm overstepping my role here, I apologize, but I have worked for the city for almost thirty-four years, I've been through a whole lot of aldermen, a whole bunch of mayors, I've seen this happen, this kind of thing over and over again, and it is not transparent for the public when legislators step into administrative functions.
I'm not trying to step into administrative function, I'm just talking about the money, that's all I'm talking about, I can take your recommendation, you can hire whoever you want, but when it comes to money, it stops here, the line stops here.
I agree, and that is why the council has the role of approving the budget.
Okay, so I guess the only question I have, and I think we need to direct our corporate council, do we even want to move this on and make a motion for this, or does the committee feel in general that this is not appropriate to move on, I mean, this will affect, um, promotions, it would affect, um, so like, police, fire, it'll affect everybody, um, so, I guess I'm going to ask from the committee, a vote whether you want to move this on to have it as a motion, since this was just a discussion, or do you not want to move it on at all?
Actually, I put a motion to put this forward, that's how it ended up in committee in the first place.
Okay, so let's do a motion, can I have a second to that motion to move it forward from this committee? Is there anybody else who wants to move that forward? To an ordinance, so that would be Alderman Hayes, um, Alderman Donanworth, or Alderman Bolton, do you want to move it forward?
No, ma'am.
You said no?
No.
So moved.
So there being no, you, you are going to second it?
Yep.
Okay, so we're going to move it ahead to put on a motion at the next time, and then we're going to curtail some of these discussions so that we can move the city council moving, um, meeting on, um, so we will, um, do, this, we'll start to get these into motions for the next, um, city council meeting, okay? Okay, um, any public comment? Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Okay, um, yep, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and let's take a four-minute break, and then we'll be back to start the council- Okay, and let's take a four-minute break, and then we'll be back to start the council. A two-minute warning. Okay, can I have all the aldermen in place, please? Alderman, I need everybody in place, please. Okay, roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Bolton.
Present.
Alderman Guzman.
Present.
Alderman Martinez.
Present.
Alderman Felix.
Present.
Alderman Newsom.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
Present.
Alderman Donnellworth.
Present.
Alderman Florian.
Present.
Alderman Hayes.
Present.
Mayor Taylor.
Present.
You have a quorum, ma'am.
Thank you. This evening, the invocation will be given by Pastor Billy McCollum from Crown Jewel Christian Ministries in Kenosha, Wisconsin. Please come to the podium, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Dear the Father, as we come before you, we bow our heads and we acknowledge you, omnipotent, present, Father. We thank you for allowing us to come together this afternoon. We ask that you continue to be God. We thank you for being God. We thank you for the powers that you've given us. We thank you for being the Alpha and the Omega, Father. Father, as we come here today, each and every member, each and every member of the board, the mayor, the aldermen, the alderwomen, the constituents, Father, the heads of departments, Father, as we come before you, we ask that you bless each and every one of them, that their purpose and their plan be in sync with God's opportunity for them to speak this evening, Father. We ask that you watch over this meeting, Father. This is not just a regular city council meeting, but this is a unified city council meeting, Father. One that will allow everyone in here to speak their passion and their heart, so that this community, that this opportunity, that this community have a better tomorrow than yesterday, Father. We ask that you touch each and every heart and soul, that they, that make them a better man and woman today than they were yesterday, growing stronger and closer to you right now than they ever been, Father. As we come before you, we understand that there will be opposition, for the Bible tells us in Luke seventeen one, that there will be offenses that will come. And each offense gives us an opportunity of growth. Father, as we come before you, we love you, we honor you, and we thank you for the words that are gonna be spoken here today. We thank you for the opportunities to speak. We thank you for the opportunity to share. Father, we ask that you allow us not only to speak, but to listen. Listen not with our heads, but with our hearts, understanding that everyone has a passion, and that we can speak to our passion without offending one another. In these things, we pray to your son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome, can you believe it or not, to the September fifth meeting. It looks like summer's coming to an end, so we're already with kids back to school, and the fall is here. So again, welcome. For those of you who are not familiar, our agendas go out on a Friday afternoon for our Monday meetings, in this case Tuesday. Please remember to always look at our boarddocs.com, or you can actually, if you're passing City Hall, we have them posted here, too. Some general comments. I want to start, starting September first, the Secretary of State's offices have revised hours and procedures. These revisions include changes to the Waukegan Secretary of State's office. The changes are part of the, what they call the skip the line program. Here in Waukegan, the Secretary of State's office will only be open, they have extended hours now, so it's eight to five thirty. But there will be no Saturday hours, so it's Monday through Friday only. If you need a Saturday, you need to go to Deerfield or Schaumburg. Again, they're all for appointments for if you need to do like a driving exam or getting a real ID or something of that nature. Now, if you're going in there to do license plates or something of that nature, you can walk in and do that. But the other is all by appointment. You can make those appointments online, or you can call their office. They are really reaching out to try and make sure that people are not waiting for hours in line, and that's what this new and improved service is. But again, it will have an impact for people who are used to having Saturday hours, because that will not be here in Waukegan. I've directed staff to explore the means and feasibility of having a civilian office of police accountability here in Waukegan. When we've kind of sorted through and worked with staff, I will share with the residents at an upcoming city council meeting, but we are still in the exploratory process of that. Last Monday marked the sixtieth anniversary of the March on Washington and Martin Luther King Day, King Junior's I Have a Dream speech. On this historic day, we remember Dr. King's powerful words that ignited a movement for equality, justice, and unity. Let's keep dreaming and working together to making a better future. We've kind of forgotten some of that, and I'd really like us to go back and look at that. The city of Waukegan has some highly anticipated upcoming events. The Northern Illinois Air Show is back this Saturday. If you remember, we did not have it last year. So it's back this year, Saturday, September ninth, with gates open at nine thirty and the show starting at noon. Tickets are twenty dollars, although active-duty military veterans with ID and children under twelve are admitted free. The Twenty-Eighth Annual Oakwood Cemetery Walk is also on Saturday, September ninth. Tickets for the Waukegan Historical Society and Waukegan Park District event are available online, and the shuttle leaves from Lilac Cottage in Bowen Park. Another popular event on Saturday, the ninth, is the Waukegan Township Walk for Seniors. This year's event includes music, fun for the whole family, and the first seniors' car and bike show. And you can register for that with the Waukegan Township. Saturday, September sixteenth, is the Ninth Annual George Bridges Five K Run Walk. Registration is through the Waukegan Park District. Saturday, the sixteenth, is also Art Walk, including Hope Fest and the well-received and enjoyable Fiesta Sinfantara, all in our downtown. On Saturday, the seventeenth, you can celebrate the Fiesta Peatras with the twenty-three independent, independents starting at ten. That's the first parade, and twenty twenty-three parade stepping off at twelve thirty. That will be the second parade. So there's two great parades that are gonna be a part of that. Both will be on Washington Street with festivals to follow. I believe one festival will be in Parking Lot F, and the other one, I believe, is at Bertrand's Bowling Alley. And finally, the faith-based and not-for-profit panels are starting back up here in the council chambers after the summer break. The faith-based panel is this Thursday, and the not-for-profit panel is next Thursday. And the next Waukegan Business Zoom meeting will be Wednesday, September twentieth, at two P M. That includes all the announcements that I have this evening. We'll move on to resolutions, proclamations, presentations, and appointments. Madam Clerk?
I'll need a first and a second for the Resolution twenty-three R two sixty-three honoring Herbert Handy.
Can I have a first?
Aye.
So moved.
So second.
Okay. Florian and Bolton. This is a Resolution twenty-three R two six three honoring Herbert Handy. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Guzman.
Aye.
Alderman Martinez.
Aye.
Alderman Felix.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Absolutely.
Alderman Donnellworth.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Motion passed. Would you like me to read it, ma'am?
Sure.
Resolution twenty-three R two six three honoring Herbert Handy. Whereas Herbert Handy has been a part of the Lake County's business community for the past fifty years, and whereas Herbert Handy has always held at least two jobs at once, and started out working at Johnson Motors in Great Lakes Naval Base, and later went on to work at Ocean Spray and the Great Lakes Naval Base. And whereas Herbert Handy discovered that he enjoyed directly engaging with customers and serving a diverse clientele, and decided to leave the job of working for someone and began his journey as an entrepreneur, business owner. Whereas Herbert Handy had the opportunity to co-own and operate a pool hall and store on Helmholz Avenue and McAllister Avenue in the early nineteen seventies. And whereas Herbert Handy bought and co-owned a bar formerly Ken's on Sixteenth Street in North Chicago, Illinois in nineteen seventy-nine. And whereas Herbert Handy purchased a liquor store on Tenth Street formerly Prater's and named it Handy's Liquor and Variety Store located in North Chicago, Illinois in nineteen eighty. And whereas Herbert Handy bought and built Fat Charlie's Restaurant adjacent to his store on Tenth Street in North Chicago, Illinois in nineteen eighty-four, and his famous Soul Food Buffet was favored and frequented by Chicago Bulls players and staff, Chicago Bears, and celebrity entertainers. And whereas Herbert Handy owned Big Bite's Restaurant at Tenth Street and McAllister Avenue in North Chicago, Illinois, and S and H Stop and Go Mart on McAllister Avenue in Waukegan, Illinois. And whereas Herbert Handy bought Toby's Bar and Grill at nineteen thirty Green Bay Road in North Chicago, and has successfully operated this business since two thousand and five. And whereas Herbert Handy attributes his longevity as a business owner to his work ethic, strong family values, a great rapport with his customers, and a longstanding desire to give back to the community. And now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Taylor and members of the City Council of Waukegan, Illinois do hereby recognize and honor his service and dedication to the community. And be it further resolved that a suitably embossed copy of this resolution, signed by the mayor and city clerk, be presented at the Market Street Reunion on Sunday, August twenty-seventh, and read into the public record at the Waukegan City Council meeting on Tuesday, September fifth, twenty twenty-three.
Is there anybody from the family here? Can I have Item B, a first and a second for the resolution honoring Pete the Tramp Yarborough?
So moved.
Alderman Newsom, a second. Alderman Turner. Or roll call, please, Madam Clerk?
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Guzman.
Aye.
Alderman Martinez.
Aye.
Alderman Felix.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Donnellworth.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Motion passed, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Could you please read that in?
Thank you. Resolution twenty-three R two six four honoring Pete the Tramp Yarborough. Whereas Pete the Tramp Yarborough is better known by his nickname, Pete the Tramp Yarborough. And whereas Pete the Tramp Yarborough started working with Whitehead Barber in nineteen fifty-six. And whereas Pete the Tramp Yarborough has owned and operated his own barber shop and beauty salon in Waukegan since nineteen seventy-three, The Comb. And whereas Pete the Tramp Yarborough attributes his success to his business mindset, understanding of the community, and being supportive of young people seeking opportunities. And whereas Pete the Tramp Yarborough has served as a positive role model and mentor in our community, and has inspired more than fifty people that have gone on to successful careers as licensed barbers and cosmetologists, and many of them also own their own businesses. And whereas Pete the Tramp Yarborough lives together with his wife, Verlina, in Waukegan where they have raised five children. And whereas Pete the Tramp Yarborough and The Comb have served as amazing landmarks for Waukegan for more than fifty years. And now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Taylor and members of the City Council of Waukegan, Illinois do hereby recognize and honor his service and dedication to the community. Be it further resolved that a suitably embossed copy of this resolution, signed by the mayor and city clerk, be presented at the Market Street Reunion on Sunday, August twenty-seventh, and read into the public record at the Waukegan City Council meeting on Tuesday, September fifth, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
And Mayor, I just want to mention something. The proclamations, everyone, have been presented at our South Side reunion to the families already.
Yes.
Thank you.
Item C, the proclamation honoring Hispanic Heritage Month in Waukegan from September fifteenth through October fifteenth.
So moved.
Madam Clerk, would you like to read that in?
Thank you. Proclamation, Hispanic Heritage Month in Waukegan, September fifteenth through October fifteenth. Whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month is celebrated nationwide from September fifteenth through October fifteenth each year, with the starting date chosen in commemoration of the anniversary of the Cry of Delores early morning September sixteenth, marking the start of the Mexican War of Independence, and resulting in independence from Mexico, Guatemala, Belize, El Salvador, Costa Rica, Honduras, and Nicaragua in eighteen twenty-one. And whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month started in nineteen sixty-eight as Hispanic Heritage Week, and was expanded by President Ronald Reagan in nineteen eighty-eight to cover the month at which it is celebrated today. And whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month highlights the rich cultural heritage that the Hispanic Latino and Latinx culture have on Waukegan through sharing the arts, food, and musical traditions of twenty-six-plus Latin American nations. And whereas during National Hispanic Heritage Month, we take the opportunity to honor all Americans of Hispanic descent and to acknowledge their past and ongoing contributions to the success and growth of our city, state, and nation. And whereas Hispanic Americans are the largest minority group in the city and county, and generations of Hispanic Americans have consistently helped make our country strong and prosperous. And whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month recognizes the positive impact and vital role they have made in our social, political, and economic landscape. And now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Ann B. Taylor and members of the City Council of Waukegan, Illinois do hereby proclaim September fifteenth through October fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, as National Hispanic Heritage Month in Waukegan, Illinois, and call upon the entire community to help observe and celebrate this important month adopted this fifth day of September, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I do want to clarify that there may have been some confusion there that resolutions and motions require a first and second, proclamations do not. Item D, a proclamation for Phi Beta Sigma fraternity, New Lambda Sigma Chapter Day, September twenty-third, twenty-three. Can you read that for us, Madam Clerk?
Certainly. Proclamation, Pi Beta Sigma Fraternity, New Lambda Sigma Chapter Day, September twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. Whereas Pi Beta Sigma fraternity was founded at Howard University in Washington, DC, January ninth, nineteen fourteen, by three young African-American male students. Whereas the founders, Honorable A. Langston Taylor, Honorable Leonard F. Morse, and Honorable Charles I. Brown, wanted to organize a Greek letter fraternity that would truly exemplify the ideals of brotherhood, scholarship, and service. And whereas members of the Pi Beta Sigma hold a deep conviction that they should return their skills to the communities from which they come as mirrored in the fraternity's motto, "Culture for Service and Service for Humanity." And whereas Pi Beta Sigma has blossomed into an international organization of leaders with affiliated chapters located worldwide, including our own local New Lambda Sigma chapter was founded in the city of Waukegan. Whereas the New Lambda Sigma chapter will continue to foster the national and local initiatives of Pi Beta Sigma fraternity to develop and implement mentoring programs for teaching young men job-training skills, investment money management skills, business development training, and community service, as well as to help provide merit scholarships for college-bound young men from Lake County, Illinois. And whereas the New Lambda Sigma chapter will be hosting the Ninth Annual Scholarship Gala on Saturday, September twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. And that is connected to the goal of improving the scholastic trajectory and future of young men in our communities. And whereas the city of Waukegan celebrates this commitment by Pi Beta Sigma fraternity, New Lambda Sigma chapter, and the Anne Blue Crescent Outreach Educational Foundation in providing academic assistance and leadership development to underserved and underrepresented young men ages eight to eighteen in Lake County, Illinois, and for making a positive impact on the lives of our youth. And now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Taylor and members of the City Council of Waukegan, Illinois do hereby proclaim September twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, Pi Beta Sigma fraternity, New Lambda Sigma Chap- Chapter Day in Waukegan, adopted this fifth day of September, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
Before we go on to audience time, I will say we have decided that we will reach a compromise on camera being on the podium. While some of you here are fine with being on camera, there are many people who are afraid to come to council and have their pictures and things put on there. So if you are one of those people that chooses not to be on camera, please let us know. Before you go up, just put your hand up first, and we will make sure that you are not photographed during it. If you are comfortable, just walk up there. If you are comfortable, just walk up there when you're called and assume you're being photographed. But like I said, if you don't want that, and there are many of you out there that do not, just let us know by raising your hand before you start. Madam Clerk, do you want to call the audience?
I certainly will. I'm going to call the first... What do I have here? The first four individuals who have signed up, Andrea Moore, Jennifer Cordova, Charles January, and Carlos Smith. Please go to the east side of the room. You'll have three minutes. Andrea Moore, Jennifer Cordova, Charles January, Carlos Smith. I will time you, three minutes. Andrea has more time. So Ms. Andrea?
I'm here.
Go ahead, Ms. Andrea.
Hello, my name is Andrea Moore. I am speaking regarding some of the home grant funding and CBDG funding that is being allocated by the city of Wakegan to different projects. The oversight and/or compliance with federal regulation is not there. Again, I am a homeless citizen because I was once affiliated with the barwell location, which is now riddled with, like, I guess what people are suggesting is gang activity, and it's just more or less the youth that are acting in their own right after the negligence, especially throughout the pandemic climate. But I was evicted because I tried to establish a tenant organization, and I filed complaints with the city of Wakegan, the Senator, HUD headquarters itself, and it lets retaliation. There are other persons who are going to experience this, especially now that the Ravine Terrace is going to, location is going to be rehabbed, and that is the elderly and disabled location. And the Community Development Committee, they just heard from Sarah Beck today from Redevelopment, which is a third-party company that just really dismonetizes off of, or marginalizes off of, the black and brown communities that they call themselves doing redevelopment when it comes to public housing. I was just looking at the report from the OIG in 95, and this is, it's a cycle. And I'm hoping that before the disabled and elderly persons throughout this winter become harmed, similar to myself and other persons who have given complaints, something has to be done, and within scope of federal regulation. So the city appoints the board members. The board members have somehow been on the board for 20, 30 years. They're supposed to be appointed, they're supposed to be considered based off of the activity. If in fact, there's so many issues or problems that are happening with the properties that fall under Wakegan Housing Authority, how is it that the same board members get appointed? They are responsible financially and institutionally for Wakegan Housing Authority, but they are appointed by the mayor. The aldermen, before you say something on agenda, oh, pass it, if you don't know about it, it's probably best that you don't do it. You've passed things on behalf of the circumstances of me and my children's life that have caused us a lot of harm. It has to stop. It must stop. It cannot continue.
Thank you, Ms. Andrea. Jennifer Cordova, please. And give me a minute to get this going, hold on. Go ahead, Ms. Jennifer.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jennifer Cordova. I am the Communications and Community Engagement Manager at the Wakegan Public Library. Did you know that September is Library Card Sign-Up Month? A library card gives you access to books, movies, music, museum passes, computers, classes, programs, and more, all for free. Stop by the library and get your library card today. If you don't have a card or haven't used yours in a while, stop by and see what's new. This month, we'll be celebrating with different activities for all ages. We have a bookmark contest where you can design your own bookmark. Winners from each age group will win a prize and have their bookmarks printed for distribution at the library. You can pick up your form at any of the service desks. We have a book character scavenger hunt. Search for your favorite characters in the children's department or at the branch located inside the Wakegan Field House. Find all 20 and get a prize. We are also giving out swag bags for everyone who signs up for a library card, and we have special swag items for those who already have library cards. So I hope to see you there at the library. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cordova. Charles January?
Good evening, Wakegan City Council, Mayor. I'm disappointed to come up here today because I've been listening, and today I came into a committee meeting, and I was appalled. I must say to you, Alderman, I feel you, because I was an Alderman in North Chicago, understand the legislative branch and what they're supposed to do in a city such as Wakegan and North Chicago, because we are the last two cities that have this form of government. I don't know who had the audacity to try to get Wakegan to be a non-city mayor form of government. I don't know who did that. I'm glad the citizens said no. Aldermen have the right to pretty much request what they want. Mayor, I love you. You know I do. I called you a couple of times, I don't get a call back, but I still love you. You're a good mayor. You're a good person. But when I hear that there was a parade given, and I have to mention her name, Margaret Carrasco and her group, and then I was told, from the community, not from her, that she had challenges with that. We have a secondary parade vendor who doesn't live in our community. I don't understand how we do that. Now, I understand there's two parades, I understand that there's horses, that horses all, and I heard there was some tumultuous things happened, that means things that happened bad with the parade. We should fix that. But to have two parades that separate their community is not nice. The person that's having the second parade that was given the parade before Margaret Carrasco's parade doesn't live here. I'm from Wakegan. We're the next community, so when something happens in Wakegan, believe you me, it's going to happen in North Chicago. Aldermen and city mayor, I want to see you guys work more together. But the aldermen correct. If they have six aldermen have a special meeting, that meeting is not binding, but that meeting does give them the right to make attention to mayor what's going on. And if they come to city council and you don't give them what they want, they just need a simple majority not to pay the bills. And I'd be willing to help them in any way I can to make these things happen germanely and correct. The administration here has no right to talk to aldermen like I heard today. That's not right. It's only right if the mayor addresses it. Mayor, address it, so your staff shouldn't be talking to the alderman like that. Aldermen, if there's seven of you, you can fire anybody in the city, except for the mayor. So understandably, aldermen have the right to discuss things. Like, when I became a city council member in North Chicago, saying to my wife, "You approve a budget a way ahead of us. We don't like what we're just seeing," and it's called.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Carlos Smith?
Man, I always got to follow somebody turning around. My name's Carlos Smith, I live 223 Washington, I own a crazy place. I just had a couple of recommendations for you guys. I think we need to clearly identify what Genesee Street is. What is it? I've had different conversations with police officers and different conversations with some people in the building, where some people say it's an entertainment district, and then some people say it's not. And the rules and whatever needs to happen or whatever, I think we need a little bit more clarity on exactly what's going on, because as I said, it's evolving into something really, really cool, I believe. Obviously, problems, we had a few issues that went down, but I think we have another, one of my brothers who just about to move into a new space on Genesee Street, he just got his keys today. He doesn't have a liquor license or anything like that, but he's a new business coming in, but I think we need some type of system to... Someone needs to come and say something, like a meeting or something, because I think that we have a lot of different businesses that don't know exactly what it is or what we're doing, as far as the whole street goes, which kind of puts everybody in a tough spot, especially somebody like myself. Just the relationship between the business owners and the city, I think, could be a lot tighter after we paid thousands of dollars to the city to be here. After that, we kind of, it's really not a relationship so much unless we got to come pay something. But again, I think we need to do a better job as far as connecting with those businesses, with us, to establish the identity of what downtown looks like. I think someone needs to take control of that and put a mission forward of what that looks like. I remember I asked Mayor Taylor a couple months ago, like, what is the plan? And she said, you know, she was giving me some ideas, but it's tough to put a plan in when it's, I guess, a rolling administration every four years or whatever. But with you guys here, I think that you guys can put together some type of plan. I know Noel, she does a great job at her job, so I know she could help out and kind of pitch some type of mission, some type of vision for downtown Wakegan. Because right now, it's just pretty much whatever we wanted to make it, you know what I mean? That may not be good for some of us, right? Because some of y'all, like, now we don't like that. But if you guys don't take control of what it looks like, then it's going to look like whatever it's going to look like. All right? Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Carlos. We have the remaining speakers will be Renee Pierre, Dean Jesus Ruiz, Sam Cunningham, Rayon Edwards, and Margaret Carrasco. So that will be Renee Pierre, Dean Jesus Ruiz, Sam Cunningham, Rayon Edwards, and Margaret Carrasco. Please state your name, ma'am.
Good afternoon, good evening, Renee Tris Pierre. So since we're evoking Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., I want you all to be cognizant that before he died, he also said that he suspected he integrated his people into a burning house that would be the United States of America. With that said, I have a couple of questions for the board and the people of Wakegan. Why is Andrea Moore and her children still in house for whistleblowing on the mismanagement and abuse of funds by the Wakegan Housing Authority? Why is the Wakegan Housing Authority being allowed to operate Barwell Manor as an open-air concentration camp for African people now known as African Americans? Why is a man who is an open member of a Cook County biker gang being allowed to continue to direct the Wakegan Housing Authority? Why doesn't the city sue NRG for the coal ash waste? Is it, or is it not, a crime against humanity and nature itself for the willful contamination of drinking water for four million people in Wisconsin, Illinois, Indiana, and Michigan? Does the city plan to sue after it happens? How many police officers are on the force that are actually trained in responding to mental health challenges and emergencies? What is the specific policy on the use of force for those type of calls? Is it the policy of this police department for an officer to strike a person experiencing a mental health emergency with, quote, "a closed fist twice on the back of the head"? I'd like somebody to provide these answers to me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Dean Ruiz?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Good evening, Mayor Taylor, distinguished alderman, and citizens of our great city of Wakegan. It gives me pleasure to speak to you as the dean on behalf of the College of Lake County Lakeshore Campus. I am here tonight to thank you for the support you have provided the college over the last couple of months as we continue the revival of our downtown campus. Our efforts and that of the city to bring to life our campus are bearing fruit. Over the last six months, operations of our Eleanor Murky Community Center have started, and we have seen almost 4,000 guests celebrate meetings and otherwise in the fifth floor of our new wonderful building. We have worked with dozens of non-for-profit and government organizations to provide meeting space and conference space at all of our downtown buildings. This is bringing traffic back to downtown Wakegan. We have began collaborating more closely with our regional educational partners and institutions that are working to highlight the potential of our city and our people. This fall semester, which we just started a couple of weeks ago, have seen an increase of 27% in enrollment at the College of Lake County Lakeshore Campus. That is something to celebrate. This is just the start of our wonderful story here in Wakegan. We thank the city for the letter of support you provided for the Climate and Equitable Jobs Act that can potentially bring to Wakegan millions of dollars of funding for training and certifications that will prepare our people and our students for the jobs of the future. Thank you, Madam Mayor, for signing that. More readily, I would like to express my gratitude for the consideration you have given to the five-year intergovernmental agreement between the city and the college for the Madison Street Mall. Lastly, I would like to extend an invitation to the aldermen who have yet to visit the Lakeshore Campus to come and see what we are doing. Come and see your constituents studying and working at the Lakeshore Campus. Wakegan is a college town, and we should be very proud of the work and the investment our community and our community college is doing in our downtown Wakegan. Thank you all for your time and the service to our great city.
Thank you, Dean. The next speaker I have is Sam Cunningham. Now, I know Sam Cunningham's signature, and this doesn't look like it, so did somebody just write it down? So we're going to move ahead to Mr. Rayon Edwards.
Good evening, council. I want to make a correction. Resolution 23R263 and Resolution 23R264 was not presented at the South Side reunion. It was presented at the Market Street Reunion, Alderman Bolton, ma'am. The South Side reunion happened to took place Saturday, something that you didn't show up that. We had over 1,200 people at that park. It was put together in three weeks, all ages, from old to kids. And it was so disgusting to me that the First Ward alderman couldn't make time to come socialize with the people that don't know you, that live in that ward. Mayor, you and this chief of staff has destroyed this police department. It is shit. For six hours, you had about 1,300 people at a park. Not one time did they ride past. Not one time did they come in and engage with the community, not to say hi, not to shake a hand or nothing. But at 8:15, you had five cars, sirens, and lights bling. That's how you come at a situation aggressively. I've said to you guys for a long time, you are the city. Every entity in this city should be up under you. You should have somebody here that is connected to these entities. How are park permits given out, and you guys don't seem to know nothing? Because all of them know who I am. And so it was just a matter of getting out the car, saying what you had to say, but you alerted all of the neighbors, you get them riled up. We, the South Side, is not scared of your police department, and I think they need to understand that. The disrespect that was displayed Saturday was disgusting, because I am somebody that advocates in my community about working together. So that was a slap in my face, and I wish my alderman had been there to speak up for us. And so tonight, y'all talk about the parking of downtown. You, mayor, gave the deciding vote to let that wraparound center come down there. You watched this school district come up here and tell you guys something on five different occasions, five different things, and I warned you guys what it was. I told you, and I spoke, and you didn't listen. So I want to know who's governing the city? Who's running the city? And do anybody that's running this city got any damn brains? Because I'm confused. You got people out here hurting, and y'all seem to don't care. You got the lawyer up there speaking more than you, and it's rude to talk while others are speaking. Y'all should do that before you get up on here. Part of being a leader is leading by example, and y'all have failed. This lady been up here saying she homeless for almost a year.
Thank you, Mr. Rayon.
Ain't none of y'all done nothing.
Thank you. Thank you. Margaret Carrasco?
Good evening. Um, tonight, I'm here on behalf of Fiestas Pachas organization, who's doing the 12 o'clock parade, um, in Waukegan down Washington Street on September 17th. We issued a press release today, Latinos Prepare Emergency Preparedness Plan to Deal with Waukegan's racist Mayor Ann Taylor anti-immigrant persecution threats to arrest Mexican chiral cowboy horse riders at the Fiestas Pachas Parade. Drawing from experience of Waukegan's past history of several other federal civil rights lawsuits, Fiestas Pachas believes that our knowledge is our greatest defense, okay, to safeguard, it's guarding, uh, not only Latinos but minorities, uh, residents and businesses from who are being targeted with hateful racial discriminatory policies and last-minute new special event restrictions applied only to us. Um, the chief of police, I don't see him here tonight, but I sent an email requesting, where is the legal code that says riding a horse is a, is a felony? I got no response whatsoever. Illinois Criminal Code does not list horses riding in a parade as a felony offense. So there's, how can the police department threaten to arrest us? That's intimidation by the mayor. Illinois Compiles, Compiled Statute 625 legally allows horses on the streets in Illinois. Next, Fiestas Pachas Parade is a special event. We have a permit. We've been doing horses for the past 20 years. We're in all the parades over Lake County. We're in Waukegan's Fourth of July Parade for years with our horses, and it's not a problem. But when it's a Latino parade, oh, now it's a problem, okay? Uh, Mayor Ann Taylor's hateful racial discriminatory new restrictions and policies were never voted on by you, the alderman. Chiral Mexican riders are not criminals and should not be treated like criminals or intimidated or harassed by city staff. They're the pride and culture in the Latino community. So instead, with so much crime, shootings, killings going on, instead of the mayor dedicating city resources to, to help to re- to reduce that, instead, she's vindictive, and she's targeting the, uh, Mexican chiral horse rice, uh, riders. Several blistering ethics complaints have been filed, and Taylor, no response. Foe request filed, she denies, denies. Okay, this is a breach of Wa- of the public's trust. We cannot be denied for celebrating our culture and traditions. Escuchen esto, escuchen esto. Promised sources and politically tied-
Thank you, Ms. Carrasco, thank you.
-said Taylor's blocking the visas for families to come to Waukegan. Están bloqueando las visas. No quiere gente que venga a Waukegan.
Thank you, Ms. Carrasco. Thank you. And, um, Madam Mayor, the public audience time is over.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda, can I have a motion to, um, a first and a second to hear all, um, items A through E?
So move.
Second.
Okay, so that was Alderman Florium and Alderman Turner.
Excuse me, Mayor. Over here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It was me.
Alderman Newsom? Okay, Alderman Newsom and Alderman Turner.
Excuse me, Mayor.
Yes.
It's a suggestion, may I make a motion before you begin that process? Yes, I'd like to make a motion, uh, that we reconsider the Chamber of Commerce as is originally presented for further discussion.
But that's not on consent agenda.
I know.
Yeah, we'd have to do that farther down.
Further down.
We can do that under old business.
Yeah.
Under old business, okay, thank you.
Okay, um, item, so we, did you record our first and second? I'm sorry.
Uh, Alderman Newsom was first and Alderman Turner was second.
Correct, thank you. Um, item A, a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from Monday, August 21st, 2023. Item B, a motion to approve the regular payroll dated August 25th, 2023, in a total amount of $1,827,314.93. Item C, a motion to approve miscellaneous payroll, PD holiday payback, and CT cash out, um, final payout stated August 25th, 2023, in a total amount of $80,125.13. Item D, a motion to approve vendor payments dated September 4th, 2023, in an amount of Item E, a motion to approve the door-to-door cookie ordering solicitation request from September 22nd, 2023 to October 15th, 2023, and from December 15th, 2023 to January 16th, 2024, by the Girl Scouts of Greater Chicago and Northwest Indiana. Any questions to the motions? Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Guzman.
Aye.
Alderman Martinez. Alderman Felix.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Donaworth.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. There being no reports in communication, item six is old business, Alderman Bolton.
Yes, and we reconsidered, uh, discussing the Chamber of Commerce as it was originally presented.
So Alderman, I just have to ask, um, were you on the prevailing side last time? Did you vote yes to the, um, to the resolution last time?
No, I voted no, so I like to-
So only those on the prevailing side can raise the motion?
Actually, I voted, uh, yes, so I will motion her motion.
Okay, so we, um, have an Alder- uh, we have a motion from Alderman Guzman to reconsider the resolution that was passed-
Yeah, I second.
At the last council date, and Alderman voted second.
Yes.
Can she second, or does it have to be-
She can second.
Okay, okay. So, does everybody remember that from last time? Okay. Um, roll call, I'm sorry, any discussion?
So it will, it will be on, if, if it passes, if the motion passes, it'll be on the next council agenda, because it has to be re-notice to the public.
Yeah.
And who's the first and second?
The first was, um, Alderman Guzman, second was Alderman Bolton. And it is a motion to hear, or, I'm sorry, to reconsider the vote on, um, September, or, I'm sorry, um, August 21st, um, to give the Waukegan Chamber of Commerce space here at City Hall for $10 a year. Okay.
What was decided at the last meeting was that, that lease would go for, I think we said six months, right?
Correct.
So that was what was ultimately voted on, was $10 for six months?
$5 for six months.
Was it $5 for six months? Okay.
So, so now you guys don't wanna give them the $5, six months or $5?
Okay.
Originally presented.
Does everybody understand the motion before them?
No.
No.
You're voting to reconsider, um, renting space for the Waukegan Chamber, Waukegan Chamber of Commerce here at City Hall for $10 a year.
$5, that's, that's what Tom was just saying.
No, cause that's what it was for six months.
No, it's originally presented.
They're doing it where they're going back to giving them a year lease.
But we amended that and voted on the amended motion, so we can't go back-
So what, no, no, correct. So what would get reconsidered is what you voted on last time. It would be the amendments.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Yeah.
So, can I, I could, we passed that correctly, I'm correct? The, the $5 for six months?
Yes.
And so the only thing we'll be able to vote on again is that same exact thing, whether they get space for six months for $5 or not?
Right, it essentially puts it back on the agenda.
Well, okay, so, so since this was an amendment, so if we vote no on the, on the amendment, then it goes back to your original, and then we vote on the original?
No.
No, if, if, if you vote no, then it never comes back on the agenda. It's done.
Okay, so if we vote yes, then it comes back on the-
Yes. That's why I said originally presented.
But then we'll only be voting on the same amended motion we did before.
Right.
Correct.
Our only option is gonna be, yes, they get it for six months, or no, they get it for nothing. I mean, they get nothing. They get no lease at all.
Can, we can't go back to your original? I think that's what Alderman Bolton wants.
You could amend it.
You could amend that.
Thank you.
So, what are they voting on right now? Let's clarify so that they-
So, so if you vote yes, the item comes back on the agenda for next time. If you vote no, it does not come back on the agenda. It's done.
And what is coming back? Is it the, um-
The vote, it's the vote, your vote is, are you, you are reconsidering the vote last time?
Which was, uh, six months for $5.
Correct.
So you're reconsidering that?
Correct.
And then do you add in there the-
We'll just put it back on the agenda as it was originally, and it's like, then it's like it never happened.
Exactly.
Okay.
Wait, I'm, now I'm even more confused. I know. So, so, uh, there was a motion to give them $10 a year rent, right? And then we amended that motion, we passed the amended motion, and then we said, let's vote on the amended motion, six months, $5.
Yeah.
And that's what we passed.
Sure, and just to back up for one sec, which you're probably gonna get to, it was a lease for two years, and we said it's not right to give a nonprofit space effectively for free, but it's also not right to kick them out on 24 hours' notice, so let's give them six months to find another home at $5 a month is what we, or, excuse me, for the term, is what we agreed to. So we amended it to try to be fair, but to also try to not take sides, right? That was the discussion that we were having.
Right, so we passed the six months for $5. Now she wants to reconsider, or he wants to reconsider what we passed, which was, okay, so that's what we're voting on, right?
So it would come back, it would, it would almost be like you never voted last time. It would come right back on the agenda.
Okay.
Okay?
The way that it was originally put on the agenda is what it'll come back as, if you wanna pass it.
$10.
For, what was it?
For two years.
It'll, it, yes. No, it'll come, it'll come back as what you amended it to be.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. So it's coming back as the $5 for six months? Okay.
But as originally presented, it was $10.
But that's not what you voted on. That's not what you voted, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so, does everybody understand now? Cause it is very confusing. Does everybody understand what you're voting on?
Yes.
The original.
No, we're not doing the original.
Cause that's what I asked.
It, can I say something? Come, come, can I say something?
Chaos and confusion.
In essence, what we are doing is bringing it back up so you can discuss it again at the next meeting.
Thank you, Alderman Newsom.
Then you can amend it at that time, is what they're, yeah.
If you so desire.
Correct, that's what I was telling them.
Yeah, so it's not coming back as the two-year for 10, or what, is it a year or two years? I can't remember.
It's coming back as it was amended.
Yes, the six months.
But it doesn't matter, because I think what you wanna do is you wanna change it again, so you'll move to amend it next time.
Yep, and then I'll amend it when it comes back again. Yeah, we're good.
Okay. So does everybody understand that you're doing a motion to reconsider the Waukegan Chamber of Commerce?
Mm-hmm.
Six-month lease for $5? Okay? Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Guzman.
Aye.
Alderman Martinez.
Aye.
Alderman Felix.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
We have discussed this ad nauseam over and over again, amended the motion, voted on the motion, passed the motion, gave them a break, now we're gonna go back and start discussions all over again. This is the most ineffective, inefficient council I've ever seen. No.
Is that a no, sir?
That is no.
Thank you. Alderman Donaworth.
No.
Alderman Florian.
No.
Alderman Hayes.
No.
It's, uh, 5 to 4. The yeses have it, ma'am.
Okay. Okay. Under new business, um, do we wanna do an omnibus on this? Okay, can I have a motion to omnibus?
Uh, so move.
Alderman Bolton, Alderman Newsom was the second.
Well, I wanna pull a couple of items then.
Okay.
Let's pull, I guess we could pull, um-
Well, there was a motion in the second, so- Mayor, there was a motion in the second on the omnibus, so technically there should be a roll call vote taken on the omnibus.
Okay.
So we can't pull?
You, no.
The motion before used to omnibus, meaning pass them like a consent, so if you don't want to do that, you could vote no?
Maybe they could reach, withdraw their motion or their second, and then we could have some discussion, then they can motion in the second again.
Okay. Let's, we've gotta do the omnibus first. You can do a roll call, if you don't want that, you can vote no. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Guzman.
No.
Alderman Martinez.
Aye.
Alderman Felix.
No.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
No.
Alderman Donaworth.
No.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
All, uh, omnibus passes.
Okay. Um, so, item A, an ordinance amending the Waukegan Code of Ordinances to adopt by reference the most recent version of the Lake County Watershed Development Ordinance. This matter was heard by the Codes and Revision Committee on September 5th, 2023. Item B, a resolution approving, uh, to purchase Chevy Tahos for an amount not to exceed $200,000 for the Risk Management and Public Works Department. Item C, a resolution approving a settlement and release of all claims for engineering department employee. Item D, visit Lake County Partnership Authorization to Pay the Annual Partnership Contribution in the amount of $34,125. Presentation was made at the Community Development Committee on September 5th, 2023. Item E, a resolution approving a new governmental agreement with the College of Lake County for the use of the Madison Street Mall. This matter was presented in the Community Development Committee on September 5th, 2023. Item F, an ordinance approving the zoning calendar 2723 variants for fence height and zoning calendar 2724 site plan approval for the permanent casino facility at 600 Lakers Road for the, uh, Full House Resorts Illinois LLC. Uh, this matter was presented to the Community Development Committee on September 5th, 2023. Questions, or, I mean, I guess we just, I, on a consent, we can just do roll call, right?
Can we pull out, can we pull one out now?
You can ask questions, I don't think you can pull it out legally.
Unless you amend the omnibus motion that was just passed.
Can I ask questions?
Just vote to let them ask questions and not go through all this?
Absolutely, ask questions.
So, on item B, we voted to spend $200,000 for Chevy, well, I don't know what we're buying for $200,000. It says, it says purchase Chevy Tahoe. Is that purchase a Chevy Tahoe or purchase Chevy Tahos? Because you're spending $200,000 and, I know, yeah, Alderman, but, and, and in the audience, when they look at this agenda, the taxpayers look at it, like, do they, I mean, what, what are we, you just voted, nobody even asked a question but me. What are you spending $200,000 for?
That's because it's in our documentation, that it says it's three. We don't have to ask, cause it's in our documentation.
Doesn't it have to be presented to the audience? I mean, it's published.
I was just gonna look and see if it's public.
But it's published, right? And what's wrong with that, what's wrong with stating accurately what you're spending $200,000 of taxpayer money for? I'm a taxpayer, I wanna know. So, just, can anyone just answer that question? What is it we're buying under item B? You don't have to look it up, somebody should know.
It was three in the committee.
Okay, thank you. Does that mean three now?
It's three.
Alright.
Would you like Risk Management and Public Works to come up?
No, I was hoping that you could answer the question, Mayor.
Oh, I mean, they, this was all discussed earlier in the committee, so all those questions were answered, and you were sitting here.
It's presented here on the agenda for a vote. Regardless of what was discussed in committee, I need clarity on the item on the agenda. That's what I'm asking.
Can I, can I read the, can I read the public content, ma'am? We'll just, so, under public content, it lists everything we're buying and where we're buying it and who we're buying it for. There's three Tahos, one from Liberty Chevrolet, one from Wickstrom Chevrolet, one from Coonsport and Aniak. And two of them are going to Public Works and one is going to the Risk Management.
Thank you, Alderman.
You're very welcome.
Okay, were there any other questions? To anything on this consent agenda? Any others, or were they just on this Tahoe? Tahos? Okay. Roll call, please.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Guzman.
Aye.
Alderman Martinez.
Aye.
Alderman Felix. Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Aldem, Alderman Donaworth.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Motion passed, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Um, Alderman time.
Alderman Bolton.
Yes, I just wanted to acknowledge, yes, once again, the event that was on Market Street reunion at two oh one Liberty Street. I was there and presented the proclamations. If you missed my attending, maybe because oftentimes I have to be at one place after another. However, I was there and I presented those proclamations from the city. I met the family. I keep constant communication with them, so I wanna make that very clear. Also, I wanted to congratulate Trinity African Methodist, um, church, which is being, um, marked as a historical preservation, um, from the Historical Society. The event will be this Thursday at one-thirty at two-ten South Avenue. They're, they've celebrating one hundred and nineteen years, and we applaud them. Also, uh, there will be a dumpster put out in the first ward on October twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth between the nine, times of nine to three P.M., and the locations will be upcoming, and I will announce those. Thank you very much.
Alderman Guzman.
Good evening, all. I, I have a lot to say tonight, so bear with me, okay? First of all, I wanna address the young lady that came up here about the Housing Authority first. I guess I'll have to make a motion, because I talked to, uh, council about, uh, board appointees. So, motion to, uh, to council to write up a new ordinance so any board that's appointed by the City Council can be removed by the City Council. And not have to wait their turn, uh, their appointee time.
Second.
Just, um, clear, so I'm writing this down. The motion is to create or pass a new ordinance or put it on the next agenda.
Correct.
Or, or to a committee of the mayor's preference per the code, so that any board member that's appointed by the mayor and approved by council can be removed by council?
Correct. And it doesn't have to wait their term or wait for, yeah, their term to come up.
So there was a motion and a second, and this would go on to a committee of the mayor's choosing? That's per the code section.
I think we should put it on a committee of the whole.
So committee of the whole, all ten of you meet on committee of the whole?
I got it. Uh, when is that?
Uh, I think that we're calling the next one for the next meeting, right, and...
Not for committee of the whole, cause it's code revisions that we have, that those are staying on code revisions. So committee of the whole will be October nineteenth.
October nineteenth.
Okay.
Okay, so there should be a roll call on that?
Yep. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
All right.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Guzman.
Aye.
Alderman Martinez.
I have a question with that, because I was actually one of the, uh, commissioners for the Waukegan House. Wouldn't it be a conflict of interest if I were to vote on it? Can I just sideline myself on that?
If you feel like you need to recuse yourself, you can recuse yourself for that reason. Yeah.
You're not, you're not a commissioner now, though, right?
Um, he's on a board there, though, right?
Yes, I am.
Then you can recuse yourself.
Okay, then, there you go.
Alderman Felix.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Donaworth.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
No.
Alderman Hayes.
No.
Motion passed. Okay.
Um, you had other things too, right?
Oh, yes. Lots of. Okay, okay. To address this, uh, article that went out here, uh, from bootle football, okay? That people will be arrested, um, because changes that staff has done. Okay. Here's the thing, ladies and gentlemen, okay? It went to, uh, staffing, and they're the ones who approved it. The City Council did not approve it. So there is no way to make changes on that. But any future parade event or anything of major concern to the city and its residents or people coming to our city, I motion to it, be, get a recommendation from the staff, but be approved by the City Council, by the full City Council.
Second.
Didn't we do that already?
Yeah, I guess I, I think I'm a little unclear as to...
Okay, so right now, parades, um...
That's by, that's by code, though. That's by ordinance.
Then we could switch the ordinance.
Okay, so your motion is to amend the ordinance, so that, uh, special event permits comes before...
Major special, major event.
What do you mean by major?
Uh, Fourth of July, Fiesta Espastras, um...
So Fourth of July, we do not do.
Um, I'm sorry?
Fourth of July is run by the Park District.
Okay. Homecoming, um, who else? Yeah, but we approve the permit.
May I make a suggestion?
We approve the permit.
May I make a suggestion? Other municipalities do events of a certain size, approved by council.
Okay. That sounds unfair.
But what, what's this, I guess we need direction on what the size is.
I guess, I don't know, five hundred, a thousand.
Okay, and so your motion, your motion is to change the code section on special event permits to any event over five hundred people, five hundred attendees?
Five hundred attendees.
So that means you could be potentially approving block parties too.
Oh, yeah. I don't know.
Why don't we approve everything?
Uh, let's go a thousand.
That means that you need to take that, you can't have staff involved. So this is where the problem came in the last time, is generally speaking, how our ordinance works is the first person who puts in for something, that's the reserve date, and that date was taken. Now, they decided to do an appeal process, and that does not go to adjudication, it comes here. So you, you made it that, the words that you left us with was make them work together and make it happen. So when staff did that, then now people are complaining about it. Either you need to leave it in the staff's hands, or you need to take it out and take responsibility, because you're putting staff in a very awkward position of exactly what is their duty. So if you wanna take that over, that's fine, but then that means that every time a special event comes in, we need to have meetings for all of these special events.
Yep.
And that's quite a lot of extra time, and I want people to understand that, because they don't want us to get halfway through the process, and then the Alderman say, I can't come for all these meetings.
That's why I, uh, put a thousand.
Okay.
So, so the motion is for, to change the code for special events, that any special event for a thousand or more participants will be approved by council?
Correct.
Okay. Is there a second, I guess?
I think Alderman Turner was...
I have a question.
Nope, nope, I'm not seconding that.
No, I, what was the, when I had my Alderman time last time, me and Stu directed the staff to do something regarding the special events. What was that, what happened with that?
I don't know what that was.
Pretty sure we should have record of that.
Bring it back, then council was gonna approve it.
Oh, there was, okay, Alderman Felix made a motion to direct staff and corporation to prepare an amendment to the city code to delegate responsibility for events occurring on the right-of-ways. This motion was not voted on, that, it was not voted on last time.
It was not voted on?
No.
Yeah, we, we, we did not vote? Okay, well, we have to go back and, and see if it was or was not, because I'm pretty sure we did vote it on.
So if you're talking right-of-ways, you're back to approving block parties.
Well, it would be in the minutes, if it was, is it in the minutes that were approved for tonight?
Well, I'll just go back and check the, um, agenda, the council meeting.
It would be in the minutes for tonight that were passed? If it was voted on?
Well, well, I'll, I'll check, cause I, I thought we voted on it, and Stu was there, and we...
We'll check it now. But if you're talking right-of-ways, that's approving block parties and everything.
Well, we, uh, that's the reason why I asked, uh, council to help me out that one time, legal council. We, he said it, and then we all voted on it, that I remember.
Isn't this Alderman Guzman's time? I mean...
I'm okay with it. He could, he could say it.
Okay, I'm reviewing, I'm reviewing the minutes from the last meeting, August twenty-first, that were passed under Alderman Felix's Alderman time. Halfway through, that paragraph says Alderman Turner also shared his thoughts on this discussion, bringing up, bringing up block parties as an example. Corporation Council Weiss shared his recommendation, asking him to prepare an ordinance amending the code, the city code to allow special events involving a public right-of-way to come before the City Council, and the City Council would be solely responsible for approving, denying, and opposing conditions. Shared that if they came to a consensus, this can be prepared for the next pertaining to this inquiry. They continue, so Alderman Felix, Corporation Council continued to discuss what this would look like and the options moving forward. Alderman Felix asked how he can make the motion to allow the City Council to make these decisions regarding special events. Corporation Council Weiss stated the motion, motion to direct Corporation Council to prepare a code amendment vesting the ability to approve and oppose conditions on special events and the public right-of-way exclusively to the City Council. Motion by Alderman Felix, seconded by Alderman Guzman. Alderman Felix, Corporation Council, Corporation Council continued to discuss. Mayor Taylor added to the discussion, directing comment, Solomon Turner. Corporation Council Weiss explained the thirty days is to have all the details finalized. Alderman Felix again shared that he is not in favor with the, the amount currently imposed per entry. Mayor Taylor responded with her comments. Alderman Felix shared that they should not be cutting people from the entry. Shared details of efforts by himself. Alderman Turner, Waukegan Police Department in downtown Waukegan over the weekend encouraged a meeting between police and residents regarding the legalities and shared examples. There was no vote on the motion, as far as I'm reading.
Okay, well, we, we're gonna go, I, I will look and make sure. Cause I, I think that, you know, and i- if that's what it was, then that's good, okay? But if it wasn't, then I wanna make sure that we are held accountable for what we're doing.
So do you want it to be of a thousand or more people, or do you want it to be on?
I think we, so Alderman Felix's motion was a thousand attendees for special event permits to be approved by council.
How do you know how many people are gonna attend?
So it, was there a second to that, though?
No. There was no second. Okay. So, um, is there anybody who wants to make a second that we write a new ordinance, meaning that things will come to the council for a thousand people or more for special events?
We could always modify the, uh, the amount of people. This is just to put it on the agenda.
For discussion?
Yes.
No, it would, oh, you, I thought you wanted a motion. You said you wanted a motion.
Motion for discussion to put, to remove.
Okay, motion for discussion. Okay.
Yep. And then we can modify there, uh, if they're happy with a thousand or five hundred or whatever.
The discussion really would be on the number of attendees that triggers council approval.
You can't, you can't possibly know how many people are going to attend.
Okay, I, I really, I, respectfully to all the Aldermen here, I wanna stay away from getting into a large discussion on these things, because this is a public meeting that's noticed. So we need to keep, if you have a referral, let's make the referral, let's vote on the referral, but let's not debate it here, because we do have to follow the Open Meetings Act.
Okay, so for this, for discussion.
So we can't discuss stuff in this meeting?
You have to be careful how you discuss it, because if it hasn't been, uh, given public notice. But you have all your automatic briefings, you have access to the attorneys, you have access to the department heads, you can go to them. And one of the things I've suggested is, instead of just saying to the department heads, I wanna change this ordinance, make it happen, why don't you guys mold the ordinance the way you would like it to be, and then present it to the department head under which committee that would come into? That would make it a lot easier. But up here, this is supposed to be Alderman time, which is where you inform your constituents of what's going on in the ward, not start debating things that have not been part of the Open Meetings Act.
This is why I'm debating it, right here, cause it came out in the paper for everybody to see.
But that doesn't make it true. There's a lot of things that come out in the paper.
So now, we have to fix it.
So, I, is there a second to this motion? Cause I don't have a second.
Second for discussion.
Okay. And then, um, I think there has to be a roll call on the referral.
I'm sorry, could you, there was a lot of discussion. So it's just gonna be, the motion is to place, um, a recommendation by Alderman Guzman for, that a thousand attendees for a special event permit application triggers City Council approval. It would be a code amendment ultimately, but he's asked for it just to be on for discussion.
And that would be on, um, do you want that in codes, or?
That should be committee of the whole.
Committee of the whole. Ten nineteen twenty-three for committee of the whole also.
Roll call. Alderman Bolton.
No.
Alderman Guzman.
Aye.
Alderman Martinez.
Aye.
Alderman Felix.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
For discussion, sure.
I'm sorry?
Sure, for discussion, aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Donaworth.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
No.
Alderman Hayes.
No.
Okay. Yes, has it? For discussion.
Now, uh, next thing, homecoming. What's going on with that? I have received multiple, multiple, um, calls about that we're probably, that the city of Waukegan is thinking about denying the homecoming parade, cause they did it under thirty days. I don't feel that, that we should be...
It's already, it's already been approved.
We're great.
And if you ask the staff, they could answer that for you.
No problem. That's why I asked, what's going on with that?
The Waukegan ordinance is limit debate, which I believe, Alderman Guzman, you said that this was a debate to ten minutes, per Alderman?
I'm sorry?
And you have to take a vote to go beyond ten minutes?
No, we don't. It's my Alderman time. I can take as long as I want.
Well, you said it was a debate, and you're going longer than ten minutes. So we would just ask if you could just be respectful of everybody else up here who would like to speak and members of the, in the audience.
And we only give the audience members three minutes, and yet we're taking thirty apiece.
Point of order. It's not an audience meeting, it's a council meeting.
Uh, who... Okay, um, one point five million dollars was appropriated for, uh, the lakefront, um, to build, uh, what is that called? A, a house or something like that, for baths and all that?
The bathhouse?
And now, it's been take, uh, what was I told last time? That it wasn't gonna go move forward, and it wanted go to take some of the casino and dispensary money. Absolutely not.
We are actually looking at grants.
Ah. Then what happened, then what's going on with the one point five million dollars that was approved by the previous City Council to give the, uh, lakefront?
We have just delayed it while we looked for grants, because there was a large amount of, we thought, grant money that was available. Um, so we haven't really gotten rid of any, like, anything. We're just looking at grants besides.
Ah, okay, so I misunderstood it correctly when, I can't remember which department head actually went up there and said that we need more money than what we asked for.
Do we remember what department head was?
It was during the, um, uh, the, what was it, the third, the hundred and thirty million dollars or something like that for dispensary and...
George, do you wanna clarify that?
I didn't understand the question.
About the one point five million, I'm assuming you're talking about the bathhouse?
Correct.
Yeah.
Cause...
The bathhouse is currently out. They're going to pursue the grant. There was one point five budgeted.
Okay, so we...
Taking away, um, three hundred thousand to finish the animal controls, or it's one point two. But the, um, meeting stated that there was a grant out there that the city of Waukegan will pursue, and that's the position that we're in now.
So, the one point two, where's that going to?
Um, some of those fundings were to make sure that we got the foundation, like, the environmental, the survey, and the architectural things done, and then they would decide what goes on after that. But for the grant, as the mayor just stated, we have to make sure that we're shovel-ready. So that's the plan currently, is to pursue that grant and continue to move on with the process for the details.
Cause it, yeah, it's not just the building that you have to worry about, but you have to do all the engineering phases before that.
Correct. How much is left?
Um, the process is still ongoing. I do not know.
So, the mo, the money's not gonna go... So the money's not gonna go anywhere else until, okay, so I'm okay with the whole process about getting the thing engineered and getting this grant, that's not a problem. But I just don't want, when the, whatever's left of the 1.2, to go to something that the council did not approve.
But you can't do that anyway.
I could take it away. So which, that's what I was gonna, I was thinking of doing.
But there's line items that have to be allocated for things, and that requires a whole other.
So just switching funds, so, yeah, switching funds is not, that's not something that can be done administratively for, so if the staff were to want to even take the 1.2 million out of, if it, where is it at in the CIP? If they were wanting to take it out of the CIP, for instance, and put it somewhere else, they can't do that without a vote of council anyway.
Sounds great to me, okay. Thank you, that answers my question. Let me see. I just want to announce disposal of dumpster drop-off, October 14th, 1525 Doug Dale for the second ward. Hopefully, everybody could join, come on by. Okay, the reason, the reason I'm so hard on money, okay? I'm a business owner. How do you think I survive? By watching my cents and my dollars. And that's how I will live by, and that's how I will try for the city council and my vote to move. So we can watch our dollars and cents. Okay? Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Alderman Martinez?
All right, I won't be too long, but I'm gonna start with the homecoming parade. Today, I did receive a call. The parade is, it's not gonna be as traditional as we are used to, but it is gonna be held on Friday, September the 22nd. It would be in the neighborhood of Brookside, Tiffany Drive, Leith Avenue, and there will be some flyers that people are gonna go out to the doors and hand out mailers to the neighborhood there. It's kind of sad, though, that we have to break tradition because I think that no one's really addressing the elephant in the room, and that is the crime, the violence that is going on in our city. I mean, this is something that's really out of hand. We've come to the point now to where we are kind of giving in. We're kind of like moving away from traditions, you know? Basketball games that cannot be played in our field because we're scared of the violence. I mean, we have a big issue here, people, and that needs to be addressed. And I'm kind of taken back to the fact that we go on and we talk about this, we talk about that, but we need to do something about what is going on in our city. Or we're gonna lose this battle, all right? We've been coming here, we talk about the parades, but let's look at the big picture. There's a lot of violence, there's a lot of people are getting killed in our city. We need to address this. I think that we should put our differences aside and really address the big problem here, the issue is violence, you know? Even in my ward. You know, I mean, that's something that is very bothering some, and I'm sitting back here and I'm listening to people are saying, but no one's even saying anything about that. You know? I mean, everyone's talking about it. I mean, we can't have varsity games anymore because we're scared of the violence. We've taken the tradition of having a homecoming parade every Saturday because of the violence. What is next? That is an issue that really needs to be addressed. We need to put all this stuff aside and really come together, and what are we gonna do? Because we're losing this battle, people. We are losing this battle. Then I also want to say that also, I had the grand honor of attending a, it was a fundraiser for Senator Adeline Johnson. It was held at the Bowen Park. I was one of the, one of the 30 visionaries that was there and attended. I do want to give special thanks to Mrs. Patricia Jones for her help in organizing it. It was a who's who amongst people in Lake County. So those who weren't there, you really missed it, but it was a great time I was helped, and I had a great time going there. I also attended the Marcus Street reunion, it was great. We see a lot of old friends and colleagues that I, that I, that I haven't seen in many years. You know, growing up in a family of 12, we grew up in Sub-Zealand housing, we grew up in the South Side, we were very limited in the resources we had, but the, it was a great time, and I had a great time being there. Also, I am going to have a ward meeting. I am trying to get all my agent orders because I want to be sure that when I have this meeting that there's gonna be special guests. I want to hopefully get department heads that can also help me with that and answer difficult questions that I'm not able to answer. Also, again, I am on a hunt, I am going door-to-door at my board with the businesses. There's a lot of trash that's being littered in the back of these businesses. In one instances, I seen a sewer that they were dumping, it looked like grease, you know? This is a problem that I am working with Chris Garland also, and also with the director of Code Enforcement, Mr. Stellis, I thank you for that. That's all I really have, but again, I, you know, I'm kind of bothered. I've been sitting here and sitting back and listening, but no one's addressed anything. So I'm hoping, you know, and I'm praying for our city, but we need to do something, we need to come together and come up with a resolution, otherwise, we're gonna lose this battle. And that's the way I look at it. In the meantime, I actually wanted to be mindful, be safe, but most of all, let's all be good neighbors. Thank you, good night.
Alderman Felix?
Thank you all for joining us today. There's a few things that I wanted to go over pertaining to the downtown. I do, I do understand where Carlos is coming from.
Can I ask, does somebody want, like, playing a? Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I thought it was a video or something.
In terms of the downtown, I mean, it is flourishing. I do see there's activity there. You know, I do see that the police have been more active towards the end of the night to help people move along, and I think it is needed, but it, I definitely, like Carlos said, do welcome business owners to come together and have a discussion as to how we can work together. You know, we're, you know, as there is more business going on at night, we're gonna need, you know, you know, other businesses to come in, open their food places, people need to go somewhere after these bars and whatnot, you know? So I do definitely welcome that discussion with the more business owners, other than just Carlos. And I've met with Jim from Horse Feathers, he also has a lot of ideas as well. Maybe it might be opposing, but I think we all should be on the same table discussing these issues. So I definitely want to open that invitation to people to, you know, let's set up a time and all of us talk together. Maybe we can have a meeting over here in the council chambers. So I will work on that on my end. In terms of the, some businesses, you know, from what I understand, current ordinances is affecting a lot of new businesses from opening, and I do want to call a motion to dissolve, not discuss, dissolve the ordinance for requiring green space on these parking lots.
Second.
I'm sorry, there was a motion to?
Dissolve, that, I'm not sure exactly what specific ordinance it is, but it's the one that requires green space on these parking lots.
So it would be a motion to repeal the ordinance that requires green space in parking lots?
Yes.
That's gonna be, it's a zoning issue that'll be, have to be, go to planning and zoning and be noticed up to.
Okay.
So that can't be, that can't be acted out of the committee, it has to go to planning and zoning.
Has to go planning and zoning, okay. And?
I don't know. Noel, do you know if that's? Is that part of the tree ordinance, or is that just part of the zoning code for the parking space?
This is where it's nice to have discussions where you talk to the department heads first so that they are prepared with the ordinance.
I want to make sure that I say this, though. I spoke to Stu, this specific ordinance does not, if we can dissolve it, this one specifically, not the parking one, this one specifically, we should be able to dissolve it. Just wanted to make sure I say that before anyone else says anything else.
So the tree preservation and landscape ordinance is the primary ordinance that has language about parking lots and landscaping and that kind of thing. There are a lot of other components of that ordinance. There are also references within the zoning ordinance to landscaping, so there are numerous things that would need to be changed. The tree preservation and landscape ordinance itself would not have to go to Planning and Zoning Commission, but it is part of the rollout that we're doing on the Unified Development Ordinance. So it's an ordinance that's already being amended in the Unified Development Ordinance process that we've been working on for over 18 months and is expected to come before you for approval early in 2024. Prior to that, you'll have drafts to provide feedback on, redlined for us.
I think that's great. So if we get rid of this, then whatever we come up with, definitely welcome it. But I do want to make sure that this is something I've been hearing, not just one business owner, multiple, this is affecting them because they can't open up until they get their parking space done, and then they're requiring to put these islands on there where, you know, I don't think there should be a requirement.
Well, I don't think what they're telling you, if that's what they're telling you, is exactly the truth. My team would be glad to talk about any, any certain permit and what we're requiring, and all of our requirements are also in the main star system, so any staff person with access to that can look up what my team is requiring with regard to landscaping. There are a lot of other issues around landscaping, so I think it would be important to be considerate of all the other factors related to that, including property values, stormwater, urban heat island effect, any number of other things. Also, I'm sorry, safety, yes. I would also suggest then doing a search of the entire city code for various terms, including the word landscaping, and identifying all of the places in the city code that might reflect that, because just repealing that ordinance because landscaping is referenced in other places may not get you there. So again, I would suggest that following the UDO ordinance process would be the better way to get to the ends that I believe you're looking for.
When is the UDO?
If there are certain circumstances, certain permits that you're looking at, that you want to discuss with my team, we're glad to meet with you and go over those and explain why we made certain requirements. There's also a variance process for any, any of the ordinances the planning and zoning deals with. There's either a variance process through the Planning and Zoning Commission, or in the case of many of the parking lot issues, through the Development Review Board. And that's a staff-level review and variance.
When is the UDO gonna be ready?
So we're working on it right now. CMAP has just, they're in the process of engaging a new consultant to work with us to finish it. So we'll have a draft, I think, sometime before the end of the year for you to look at and provide feedback on, and I think by the time we do the formal public hearings and go through Planning and Zoning Commission and Community Development Committee and full council, it's probably the end of first quarter 2024, March-ish.
So any businesses being affected by the landscaping or minimum parking requirements now is gonna just have to suffer through it?
No, there's a variance process. So, and we educate all of our applicants on that. If they say they can't meet a requirement, we work with them to meet it. So the, that ordinance currently gives us the ability to administratively allow them up to 24 months to complete the work. They have to submit a landscaping plan at the beginning, along with a phasing plan for how they're gonna do it and what timeframe for each component. And if they can meet it, anything that they can't meet, there's a variance process, and they can get approval from someone besides one planning department reviewer.
So this is one element, it was like two, excuse me, big deal, but, so he was talking about the landscaping, but there's also gonna be a motion about minimum parking requirements, same situation with the parking lot. So I just throw that out there, we don't have to discuss it, but.
Oh, yes, if I can make that motion to dissolve that certain ordinance.
It's to repeal, to repeal.
To repeal?
Yeah, we can't dissolve an ordinance, we can repeal it.
So that's how you get rid of it? To repeal it?
Yes, repeal it.
And I think we also want to consider really looking at this because I know lately we've gone through the whole thing with the tree ordinance, but I'll give you a little bit of history on the tree ordinance that a lot of us haven't really thought about, is, I don't, the fees were assigned, it was long before any of us were here, and there's adjudication process to appeal the fees. But the actual tree ordinance was put in on July 5th of 2005, and the landscape stuff is a similar thing, is to, we had a problem with people taking trees down and extending their driveways and extending concrete, putting patios out. The problem with that is, we lost our engineering in about 2007. So now what we're finding is we have a lot of properties that are over there 60% of permeable surface, which makes it so that when we have these 100-year floods that are every other year, there's flooding problems because there's nothing to absorb that water. And we want to be really careful that we're not doing one thing that will then later affect other residents when their properties flood. As we all know, climate change is a real thing, and now that you've got so many of these rains coming and weather changes, we just want to be careful as we make some of these decisions that we are leaving some kind of landscape there so that we're getting something that absorbs water.
I'm definitely for that, you know, but, and I'm pretty sure we're gonna come up with a great plan, but until then, I want to make sure this, we put this on the council.
Okay. And then do you want to put something else to?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, to, if you rescind this, do you?
This is, okay, so there was a motion, I believe Alderman Turner seconded your motion, right? Am I wrong?
Yes.
And so it's the mayor's prerogative as to where it would go.
I would put this one on committee of the whole again. And are you doing it as a motion or are you doing it for discussion?
A motion.
Okay.
And so there should be a roll call vote on whether this goes to committee of the whole now?
Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
So does everybody know what the voting is?
No, please, repeat.
Okay. So this is a motion to rescind the green space on the parking?
Yeah, essentially, it's a motion to repeal the code, any code that requires green space, islands, and parking lots. I don't know where that all is in the code, I don't know, it sounds like it's in multiple places, perhaps. So we'd have to probably look for it.
So this is gonna take a while for the attorneys to figure out where all that is.
And then it'll go on committee of the whole, October 19th.
Alderman Bolton?
Aye.
Alderman Guzman?
Aye.
Alderman Martinez?
Aye.
Alderman Felix?
Aye.
Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Downworth?
Aye.
Alderman Florian?
No, I believe Alderman Felix needs to take each individual's situation and bring it to the Planning and Zoning Department so they can work with them. They're not holding up businesses from opening because of their parking lot. There's a process you can go through to make this not happen. So let's use the process we have.
Alderman Hayes?
No.
Motion pass.
Thank you. The second thing that I wanted to bring up is the, and I also need help from the counsel, legal counsel, exactly which ordinance this is, that requires a certain amount of parking for the, puts a limit on the business capacity. Is that something like, something along those lines?
Minimum parking space requirements.
There are minimum parking requirements per zoning, I think. That's Article 12 of the zoning ordinance. An amendment to that would have to go through the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Community Development Committee and the city council, and that too is part of the Unified Development Ordinance. And we had a public meeting on September, I'm forgetting the date, if anybody remembers, help me out. August 24th, was it August 24th? We had a public meeting in this room, it lives on YouTube now, that was about parking and how we're planning to rescind the parking requirements as part of the Unified Development Ordinance.
Oh, I'm not talking about like parking downtown and stuff like that, that's not what I'm talking about.
We're talking about parking for businesses. We're talking about rescinding the minimum requirements for parking for businesses. But making these changes now to ordinances that are already being redrafted as part of the Unified Development Ordinance is very likely to delay that process even further because staff is currently reviewing drafts already that have been prepared by CMAP. So anything that changes now, we have to go back to the stuff that we've already reviewed, try to re-edit it, to make it conform, go back through another review process before it can advance further than where it is today. I strongly advise that you hold off on anything that's in the UDO and address it in the UDO. In the meantime, we have variance processes, we have these things that have been in place, and we can work with individual people if they will talk to us about it. But permits also require the applicants to submit everything that they need to. But permits also require the applicants to submit everything that they need to submit. So we often see that we've requested more information and then they're not submitting it for weeks and weeks and weeks. And they're saying that the city's holding up their permit when in fact, most of the staff or the staff who needed to review at that level has probably reviewed it within two or three days. And Main Star tracks those dates. So on any individual permit, we can go in there and look at when information is submitted, what is requested back, how long it takes for the applicant to respond. We can track all of those things and you can see the facts of the permits. And we're glad to do that with any one of you on any permit at any time.
So you're going to be supportive of a variance request for a minimum, for no parking restrictions or requirements?
In places where it makes sense. I mean, we don't have a personal opinion. We look at how it impacts the neighborhood and how it impacts the businesses. So if there's a business that's, I mean, we already have a park and shop program in the zoning ordinance. So if you're on Genesee Street, you don't have to meet the parking requirements for retail shop. They're waived completely because there's public parking there. It's a park and shop area. If you're on Grand Avenue and you have a parking lot that maybe is, let's just say your requirement is ten spaces and you have eight parking spaces, get a variance for the other two. That's an easy process.
And you would be supportive of that?
I don't provide an opinion either way, but that's a logical variance. And one that I think the development review board would support. Development review board is department heads. So police is represented. They'll say, okay, is this going to cause an unnecessary traffic impact? Public Works would say, is this going to cause somebody to park on our sewer grates or whatever the situation was? Each department head would review it together as a team in the development review board meeting, look at all the information and vote, and that's a simple majority vote. And the applicant comes to that meeting, they can make their case, they can ask questions, answer questions, that kind of thing.
What happens if they get denied? What's the next step?
They can appeal, and I don't have the ordinance in front of me. I, I believe an appeal to the development review board is to the city council, but I'd have to check the code and make sure. I'm not aware of that ever having happened before. People usually get their variance at D R V. If it makes sense, they usually get it.
Great, thank you.
The hard part is, I'd really like you all to become educated on the U D O and talk to Noel and her team who have been phenomenal about doing this process and have been working with things for years on end. I mean, they have been a part of this for years. As Alderman, you know, we only hear one side of things and we don't necessarily get the whole picture. So I, I can't advise, but I would say, you know, maybe we should just put some on pause. Because some of this is going to take a lot of review by our attorneys as well, that we need to be able to give them time rather than cranking out all these motions at every council meeting under Alderman time. It's, that's what the process is.
So thank you guys, everyone for, you know, saying something, you know, it's my Alderman time. But I, I welcome you guys talking about it because, and I do want to say, I don't care how long we, we take here. You know, this is, this is, this is the job, you know? Thank you. So in, in terms of the, the parking space, I do want to say, I'm pretty sure, and this, this is a plan that's coming together, but this, this is what I see that I believe will help out businesses. And, you know, if something else, you have to work hard again to create another plan. I'm pretty sure it's going to come in place. So I do understand that this one cannot just remove. You have to direct staff to, to dissolve it. Am I, am I right or am I wrong?
Well, I, I think what I'm hearing from the director, Mrs. Zoning Administrator, that they're already looking and they are already in the process of amending exactly to what you're asking for.
But in terms of my question, I, in terms of that specific ordinance, to dissolve it or to start the process to get rid of it, how would I, what would be that?
So it's the same, so you could, you could move to amend the code to repeal that ordinance, the code section that already has minimum parking requirements?
And can you direct it, can you, can you, because this is to give direction, right?
Oh, I understand. I understand. I think, so you're, what you're stating is you want to work with staff and making sure that that happens in the most expeditious way possible?
No.
No? Okay.
I want to direct staff to, to amend that specific ordinance, but to work on it, basically.
That's, that's what she's doing. They're already doing that. So if you would please look at Article twelve of the zoning ordinance and provide me a redlined version so that I know exactly what it is that you're asking for. Because we would have to make a text amendment with specific language, publish the information in the newspaper, present it to planning and zoning commission. And it has to have an applicant. And I'm not a viable applicant for that because we're already working on the unified development ordinance that we've been working on since two thousand and nineteen, when we first applied for the grant for the unified development ordinance. So if you could redline Article twelve of the zoning ordinance, cross off anything that you think needs to be removed, change anything that you think needs to be removed, then we'll have information that we can present for a text amendment. And that's how we change language in the zoning ordinance that goes then to the planning, planning and zoning commission for consideration. After planning and zoning commission considers it, they make a recommendation to the city council that comes to the community development committee. Or there is that process, and I believe Chief of Staff Bridges has a form you can fill out that you can provide that information with the signature of two other Aldermen, and then we would know exactly what you're looking to do.
Or, or he could just do what Noel just said. Have the business owner or businesses owners put it towards, towards the committee. If they get denied, appeal it and then bring it back. And then things solve before two thousand and twenty-four.
Oh, I will say this. I will do that. I will redline specifically what, what it is. Do understand that you, you know, you are working on something. On my end, I would do more homework as to how it affects any grants that we might get. But other than that, if it doesn't affect it, then I will say no. I will try to move forward.
So Article twelve has, off the top of my head, I think it's approximately fifty parking classes under which there are individual parking requirements for different classes. So the more intensive use, the more parking is required. And so, you know, for clarity's sake, for us to understand, if you want us to just get rid of all parking requirements unilaterally, that's a different thing than saying retail businesses that are under five thousand square feet shouldn't have a parking requirement. Do you know what I mean? So if you'd like to sit together and work on that, I'd be happy to do that as well.
What, what, okay, so this is what I, what I want. Certain businesses that have a capacity to hold so many people, I don't want them to just be like, well, we can't hold more, more people cannot come in because we have a certain parking ordinance. Because there's people that take Uber, the people, the people don't always just get to somewhere, just, you know, driving there. They take Uber, they have, there's other ways to do things. And sometimes we limit businesses or they stop, you know, they stop from expanding or even opening because they know that they have, we have certain, some certain, these requirements. So.
Exactly. There are no classes in the parking ordinance that are a one for one. There's nothing that says for every seat or every space, you have, have to have a parking space. For example, restaurants, per seating capacity, every three seats is one parking space. That, that doesn't count the employees or the other space. It's just every three seats of seating capacity is one parking space. Houses of worship are similar. One parking space per three seats of seating capacity. So it's not one for one. But again, there's, there is a variance process that any applicant can use. We've seen, I'd say at least fifty percent of the planning and zoning things that have come before the council in the last six months have had some aspect of a variance. Now, it's not always parking, but sometimes it is parking.
That specific, thank you for, that specific one, the one where it requires three per seat or per parking.
One parking space per three seats.
Yes, that's the specific one that I want to get rid of.
Is that the only one?
Right, yes.
So under the U D O, as it's proposed right now, that would go away. There would be no minimum. There might be a maximum so that they're not overparked, so that there is some green space and not everything pavement in our community.
Capacity for the building, I think, is perfect. You know, you can't let more people than what the capacity is.
Right, capacity is fire code, yes.
Yeah, so I think that'd be, that's why I want to get rid of that specific thing.
But in the cases where it creates a disturbance for the neighborhood because there are too many cars on the street or in neighborhoods where there isn't enough room for an ambulance or a fire truck to get down the street if people are parked on both sides, those are things that we have to consider.
These are things that are being brought up, but if you look now, you go on Saturday night or whatever, you know, I, I see it. People, like you said, sometimes people don't follow it. So, you know, so that argument in terms of, it's, what is, what is affecting businesses is that specific thing.
But there's a variance process.
These things that could, yeah, that's why I wanted direct staff to start the process to get rid of that specific thing.
So the variance process is for individual circumstances.
Not the variance.
Where they can come to us and present their circumstances and say, this is why our situation is different. And then it's, it's reviewed and considered by either the planning and zoning commission or the development review board, whichever is the easiest, most appropriate process under the city's code. And then reviewers are looking at the circumstances of each particular property when a variance comes forward and making a decision based on that property. Not unilaterally saying this applies to everybody. Because things don't unilaterally apply to everybody in many cases, especially around zoning factors.
If this were to go through, okay, you know what? I want a motion to discuss getting rid of it.
So a motion to discuss minimum parking requirements?
Yes.
And then is there a second to that?
Can I get a second?
It'll go on to the, it'll go on to the, it'll go on to the committee of the mayor's choosing.
Yeah, not, not to committee of the whole, to, for discussion for the next agenda.
Which agenda? It goes to the, it goes to the committee of the mayor. It's in her discretion.
Remember, that's what we're trying to change, Felix, so you can specify that.
Change the ordinance.
That's what we're trying to do. We talked about it last time.
I need to know if there's a second, though.
There is a second.
So. Who, so it's Felix and Guzman, is that it?
Correct.
Yes.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Guzman.
Aye.
Alderman Martinez.
Aye.
Alderman Felix.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
What is this for? To go to, I don't know. It'll be the committee of the mayor.
No.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Donaworth.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
No.
Alderman Hayes.
No.
Motion pass.
Thank you guys for, everyone for waiting in. I do want to say that we have a fourth ward cleanup. Dumpster's going to be put up soon. It's going to be October seventh. It's going to be on the parking lot D on Sheridan and Clayton. So for those that, one big thing that a lot of people have at home is tires. So if, you know, you just remove the rim from the tire, you can dump, you can dump the, the rubber part of the tire at the, at the dumpsters and a whole bunch of other items. We will put the information out there soon. So it is going to be October seventh for sure, and it is going to be the parking lot D on Sheridan and Clayton. And we'll put out a flyer as to what can be dumped and what can't be. Other than that, you know, I, I do want to say, you know, thank you everyone for, for being here. Also, I, I forgot. Can we motion for these horses to be allowed in this parade?
That you have nothing, there's nothing before the council to consider on the parades that was the appeal process is over. So there's nothing that's further, before the council. I think to Alderman Guzman's motion is whether you consider special events going forward, maybe something that happens in the future, but with regard to the current parades that are happening, there is no appeal before the council.
Absolutely no, Ross.
Well, it's not an appeal, Kelly. He's not appealing it. He's suggesting that we pass an ordinance.
About, there's nothing before the council with regard to the current parades. So the decision, the decision to reverse the denial of the application was made by council. It's back. The permits have been issued, and there's nothing in the code that allows the council to now legislate what's currently occurring with the parades.
Is that it, Alderman Felix?
Just want to make sure. So we cannot, not, not apart from.
If you take over parades going forward, that might be something that you allow if, if that's, if the code changes. But with regard to the, the current parades?
Not, not current parade, just current, is there, well, maybe, I don't understand this. Maybe that's why I'm asking.
This would go to the special events, the code section under special events, what's allowed, what's not allowed?
Aye.
That would be a code amendment in the future.
Can, can I say something on that, please?
Well, are you going to say during your, or you can, you can say something.
So as I understand it, Kelly, correct me if I'm wrong, Illinois state statute says something to the effect that horses are treated as a motorized vehicle. They have, they're legal to ride a horse on the street. They're legal to have a horse-drawn vehicle or carriage or some such on the street and it's treated the same as motor vehicle, except that they always have right of way. So I don't see how we can ban a, an authorized vehicle. State of Illinois says, yes, you can do the, you can have these vehicles, horses, but we say, no, you can't.
It's the same way you can restrict the types of vehicles that are, that are in the parade currently. It's not, it's not a matter of whether it's a vehicle. It's a matter of the city's resources and how they can manage the traffic control. And it is the city's staff decision that they cannot manage traffic with two parades going on, with horses also on the parade this year. That was their administrative decision. Waukegan's a home role community. Waukegan's rules can be more restrictive than other, than the state law, unless it's preempted by state law. But it's not really a traffic issue so far as it's a public safety issue, as, as the staff have determined.
Got it. Thank you.
Well, I do want to say that this, this past weekend, I attended Park City. They had horses without a problem. North Chicago's going to have a Fiesta, you know, Pateas as well. I don't see restrictions on horses as well. So, you know, I want us to pay attention to those things as well because, you know, we're a city of progress, but we're, we're, you know, it seems that we sometimes can go back. And I don't think that's, that's right, especially with something like this that's cultural and it affects, you know, our, our culture. I do want to say that, you know, again, what, what Juan did was perfect, you know? Bringing up violence at outside, it's happening a lot. You know, and then one thing that I remember saying when I first came is into, as Alderman, you know, we all live in a household where we have access to our brothers, sisters, fathers, mothers. You know, we can let them know to do better, to, you know, make the right choices when they leave the house. You know, it gets to the point where, you know, I don't even want to let my son out, you know, walking, I have to drive him because you never know what could happen. These things, these accidents, these shootings are happening during the day. So, you know, but we, we can change the narrative. We can be more involved by letting our, our, our family members, because at the end of the day, it's our family, it's our community, our family members, we know who they are, to make better choices, you know, or be there for them. You know, and then also, you know, I welcome people coming to me. If they have resources for mental health, you know, please, you know, I'm doing my best with, with, you know, what I'm part of. In the community, I reach Waukegan, where we're having mental health people come in and try to advocate for the kids and the adults because we all need help. But yeah, now that's, I just want to make sure, legal counsel, there's two motions put in, right? There's.
So I have a motion to repeal any code requiring green space islands and parking lots. That's going to go to committee of the whole on October nineteenth. And then motion for discussion only of minimum parking requirements in Article twelve of the zoning code. Mayor stepped out, so I don't know where that's going. That was.
That would also go with that one.
So committee of the whole, October nineteenth.
That's it for me. Thank you, everyone.
Alderman Newsom.
Thank you. I'm going to be very quick. I just want to thank Public Works, Mr. Chris and Superintendent, Mr. Alonso. I had a clean sweep in the fifth ward on Saturday, August the twenty-sixth. And I just want to thank you all for making sure that went forward and that it was a success. And the two employee staff members that. And the two employees, staff members that, uh, were on site from 8:00 AM till noon, uh, Mr. Javier and Mr. Ricky. So, if you could pass my thank yous on to them, I appreciate all the hard work and helping those, uh, unload their cars and, uh, things of that nature, the things that they needed to get rid of. And I do plan, uh, won't be another one this year, uh, but then in the spring, I guess we'll probably do another one in April when we do the... Yeah, Earth Week, so, um, gather your items up and it'll be, uh, April next year when you can get rid of them again. And not just for, uh, my ward, if there's, uh, another ward on a particular day, you'll have the opportunity to take it to that, uh, ward if you're not available on the day that it comes to the 5th Ward. And, uh, that's all I have, have a good night.
Alderman Turner.
Thank you. I have several things too, I'm trying to make it quick. So, I want to start off by recognizing Rayon for the great job he did with that South Side picnic. I was down there, man, it was off the chain, we, it was a great time, and I really think it set the model for what some of these events should look like. And the food was good, too, I liked it, alright. I, I, I'm really happy, delighted to hear Alderman Martinez and Alderman Felix speak about public safety. This is something that is a pinnacle priority for me. Uh, we never seem to talk, we talk about our social calendars and all kinds of other stuff, but we never seem to get around to public safety. So, recently, there was a shooting up in the 6th Ward, the Sitco Gas Station on, um, Golf Road, 57 rounds fired, two young ladies were, were, um, seriously wounded. My understanding is that they're gonna recover. But we, we are not giving any focus and discussion. We, and, and look, tonight, we're discussing all this stuff and we're putting stuff in committee to be further discussed and discussed. Some of this stuff we've been discussing since February, we're re-discussing that, with things that we've already settled, we're bringing it back for reconsideration, but we never want to get around to public safety. Recently, as you know, Alderman Felix and I were down on Genesee Street, but I've been down there several times, including last Saturday, Friday and Saturday, um, observing. Uh, we do need to come up with a plan and engage the businesses. Carlos, you, I've, I've been down there, I've seen your guys, I've seen you out there trying to move people along, same thing at, um, the Dream Lounge, and I, I really think we need to have a sit-down. I'll, I'm, I'm always available, I'll come to you, alright, I'm gonna come to you. And, and we'll talk about it, because I want to hear your ideas, I'm interested in knowing what you think the solution is, okay? You know, the, this, this basketball game that was moved and they had to go out of town, we don't talk about that. Uh, we get the significant incidents every day, that each Alderman gets an email with the significant incidents, and those are the things that the, the shift supervisors in the police department determine are significant, they want to pass on to the next oncoming shift and, and to the chain of command. We get those emails and we see the carjackings, the robberies, the shots fired, and, and all of that, but it's never discussed. I've asked repeatedly, seven times, I've asked for a public safety committee, per nada, nothing, right? And then the mayor tonight mentions that she's in process of developing a citizens something, police accountability. Um, Citizens Office of Police Accountability, but no Alderman's Committee of Public Safety, where we could discuss these issues, so... I want to make it an eighth time and ask that the mayor, please establish an Alderman's Committee for Public Safety, if not, then, you know, I mentioned several months ago that Alderman Martinez, Alderman Donaworth and myself would establish the Public Safety Caucus, and if needs be, we are gonna start taking very public action in that regard. Alright. Okay, so, uh, Labor Day is the end of the 6th and 7th Ward Rewards Program. You guys, yeah, that program, we, um, Alderman Donaworth and, and I, we're offering $2,000 reward for anyone with information leading to the arrest and conviction of someone illegally in possession of a firearm, we'll pick that up again in Memorial Day. Uh, this, this ordinance on the camera, Mayor, we unanimously passed a resolution or a direction that staff craft a resolu, uh, an ordinance that that camera be pointed at that podium when the audience is speaking. And tonight, it was not, at no point did it, it, uh, point to those people, the audience that were speaking. And you stated that you came to a compromise. Well, I don't know, we didn't ask you to compromise, and you didn't compromise with me, I was the one who made the motion, so you never mentioned me about, I don't want to. And again, this just kind of reflects your disregard with the council wants. We all, we voted unanimously, point the camera over here. Now, there's cameras in this building, all over this building, so you're getting looked at, and you don't have any expectation of privacy, whether you want to or not, right? You don't have any expectation of privacy in a public space, certainly not in a public meeting, certainly not addressing the public meeting, the, the public body in a public meeting, so I, I want that ordinance. I don't know why we even have to do an ordinance, I don't even know why it's never pointed over here. But anyway, that's what I asked for, that's what we voted on, I would like to have that followed through with point over here.
Turner, Alderman Turner.
Yes.
We did vote on a lot of things, and, and, uh, I, I welcome whoever wants to look at the last video and let us know what you guys think, because we did vote on it. What happens when we vote on something, legal counsel, like, what, what happens when we vote on something and it doesn't get done? What, what happens? What's the next process?
That's what the mayor decides, she decides what you get and what you don't.
They were, I mean, it was said tonight that they could be on there. I mean, there was nothing that was...
Mayor, we, we specified an ordinance what we want, and we passed that unanimously. It wasn't about discussion, or maybe you could do this, or you could do a little something else, right? We, the council, want that camera pointed at whoever's speaking at the, at the podium. That's, that's, that's cut and dry, there's no alternative. Right? So, that's, that's what I want, that's what I motioned, that's what I seconded, that's what I motioned, that's what was seconded, that's what was voted on, that's what we want. I don't understand why that is such a challenge. 14th Annual 6th Ward Ice Cream Social is this Saturday, 2:00 PM, 503 North Genesee, hope you guys come out, ice cream at the right price, it's free on me, alright? Now, also, uh, I heard you say, Mayor, and I apologize, folks, because I, it's not my intent to come here every weekend. Anyway, you said, go talk to the department heads, but in the pri, about whatever changes you want. But in the past, you've specifically stated, don't talk to department heads, then you took that further and said, don't talk to public employees. I have to put in FOIA requests to get information from a city employee. So, I've been putting in FOIA requests, I got four FOIA, oh, wait a minute, I gotta back up. So, initially, I was putting in the FOIA requests and I was sending them to Kirk Kilkelly's office, and she was acting on them, putting them in the system and then advising me, here's the tracking number, etc. And then she says, you know, Keith, I'm not the FOIA officer, you should be sending this to the FOIA officer. I said, oh my God, you're right, we changed the process, or you changed the process. So, I started sending those FOIA requests to Maria LaCora. I've got four, and I haven't heard a peep over the, and I'm, I'm saying, this is one each week, right, for the last four weeks. No response, no acknowledgement that I sent it in, no action on my FOIA request. But I'm not supposed to talk to anybody, I'm not supposed to ask anybody anything, suppression of my freedom of speech.
Can I respond to that?
Yes, please do.
Okay. First off, I have never said not to talk to a department head, I have said, do not talk to staff because you were directing people on staff to do certain projects without ever approving it with the department head, which means that you're spending money on projects, and I'll, I'll give you an example. We had a new public works director last year, and you directed them to go and spend money on speed humps without getting that approved. Uh, there was nobody who said...
You said that, you and I had that discussion, you and I came to agreement, and you said, I'm gonna do this, and then you said, I'm gonna do that, then you said, I can only give you seven, no, I'll give you three.
I said, we have to go through the process, which is what our risk management does. But what I will say is, go and talk to a department head, just don't talk to their staff, because there's reasons that we don't want you talking to staff, and...
I don't care who you don't want me talking to, I can talk to anybody, I want to, you can't tell me who to talk to. You don't dictate to me or anyone, Mayor, you don't have that, you have no authority to tell me who I can speak to, none.
But when there's employee complaints, there has to be...
Then you let the employee complain, you let them complain and you deal with their complaint.
And we are.
You, you do that.
Um, but I would prefer you to go to department heads because they're being excluded out of things that they should not be excluded out of.
I don't know what about that, you manage, you know, micromanagement is not management. Alright, so I do want to make a couple of motions, and, and one specific to, uh, Alderman's access to city personnel and information. And I want to make a motion to direct staff and corporation council prepare a written ordinance that Alderman may communicate with any personnel employed or contracted by the city of Waukegan to request information or to request action to be taken or to discuss any matter related to any city business in any manner that the Alderman may choose, including verbal, written, text message, instant message, messenger, email, or any other form of communication. Such information must be provided to the Alderman unless there is a personnel, personnel privacy, uh, legal, uh, police or IT security restriction that precludes or restricts the release of that information. A Freedom of Information Act request may not be required of an Alderman unless they are seeking protected personnel privacy, legal, police, or IT security information, that's my motion.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second it.
Who is that, um, Alderman Guzman? Okay. You need to, uh, vote on that? Okay, roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Bolton.
Clarify, what are we voting on specifically?
Voting that we have access and not restrictions on who we can speak to.
Was it also information that gets provided? There was a whole part of that, I think, that we're missing, or at least I'm missing.
I'm sorry.
Could you, could you just reread the, could you reread the motion again? I think that would be helpful.
Okay. It's a long motion. A motion to direct staff and corporation council prepare a written ordinance that Alderman may contact or communicate with any personnel employed or contracted by the city of Waukegan to request information or to request, operative word, request, not order, we're not in the chain of command, right? Request action to be taken or discuss any matter related to the city business uh, in any manner that the Alderman may choose, including verbal, written, text message, instant messenger, email, or any other form of communication. Such information must be provided to the Alderman unless there is a personnel privacy, comma, legal, comma, police or IT security restriction that precludes or restricts the release of that information. A Freedom of Information Act ma, request may not be required of an Alderman unless they are seeking protected personnel privacy, legal, police, or IT security information.
So, I'm hearing this echo, as long as it's not breaching confidentiality.
Right, yeah, as long as it's not protected for legal reasons, personnel reasons, police reasons, or IT security reasons, we should be able to get that information and we should not have to put in a FOIA request, which is ignored.
So, that doesn't include directing staff, though?
No, ma'am, I, we don't give direction.
Okay, that's not what we're hearing, but, okay.
Well, well, ma'am, I, I'd say, if, if the personnel are not aware of what their chain of command is, then that, that's an education project. I can ask any question I want. You can say, no, Alderman, I can't do that, Alderman, you should talk to my supervisor. We can ask, it's not direction. I have never given any, any, uh, individual in this, anywhere in this city a directive, an order, because I don't have that authority.
Interesting, okay. Um, okay, and then there was a second motion, correct, right?
Well, do we have a second on that one?
Well, I feel like we're already doing this, I mean...
No, we're not already, that's, that's why I have a motion, because I've been told I have to put in FOIA requests. And I just said, I put in four FOIA requests in the last month, and I've got no response to them, none, that's a violation of FOIA law.
Try your portal.
So, it was already motioned and seconded, and we were already starting the roll call.
And is that to be discussed at, uh, the motion at the next meeting?
See, why do we have to go and discuss everything, I have to go to committee?
It's the process.
And that's what we're gonna change, remember I made that motion last, last meeting?
The public has to have a chance to make a comment on any ordinance we create. If we vote on this now and change it, the public hasn't had a chance to comment.
No, we wouldn't vote on it now, but we could vote at a next meeting, we don't have to go to a committee.
But legal has to have a chance to go through all of these, you're, you're giving them an awful lot of motions on the fly besides all the other stuff that they need to do. So, you're already running over on your committees because there's so much discussion on committee time, even though you've had Alderman briefings and everything else. So, we don't have enough time to get all this done, so we will do as much as we can on the 19th.
Great, thank you.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Guzman.
Aye.
Oh, we're voting, I'm sorry.
Alderman Martinez.
Aye.
Alderman Felix.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Nay.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Donaworth.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Um, I am voting no because I have witnessed some exchanges between Aldermen and employees that embarrass me to death. Um, I try at all times, I don't always succeed, but I try to always treat our employees with the respect they deserve, and I, I don't want to authorize anyone to treat any employees the way I've seen some Alderman act towards employees, so no.
Alderman Hayes.
No.
Motion pass.
Okay. Um, you had a second motion?
No, I have another one that I'll bring up at the next meeting. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, have a nice night.
Thank you. Alderman Donaworth.
Yes, thank you everybody for coming and sitting through this here tonight. Um, I just want to remind you, make sure to be careful when you're out there. If you see anything, make sure to report it, if you need to call the police, call the police, if it's not needed, please give me a call. I do answer my phone every time. Um, I want to thank all, all the staff and all the employees of the city of Waukegan for answering all my questions, getting back to me, um, and everything like that. Um, also, I'm gonna have a 7th Ward Clean Sweep on October 21st. Uh, the location is coming up, um, I'll be able to say to the next council meeting. And then just basically, um, be safe.
Alderman Florian.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, um, I wanted to, um, announce again about the Harbor Fest that's occurring on, uh, September 24th. It's a Sunday from 12:00 to 4:00, it's a family event, there'll be music, the Blues Family Robinson and the Judson Brown Band will be performing at Greentown on the rocks on their stage. And then in the vicinity, there'll be approximately a dozen food trucks. Um, and it's, there's, there's not a fundraiser, it's just a, a fun family event I've been working on with the guys at the harbor, so hopefully everyone will come out and enjoy that. Um, on September 28th, that following Thursday, I'm having a ward meeting at McCall School at 6:00 PM, and one of the topics we'll discuss will be, um, the allocation of the funds from the casino and the marijuana money, so everyone knows what we know about it, how much we're getting, all the needs we have, not enough to go around, what, what we need to, to do about that. Um, and get some input from the public. I would like to talk a little bit about, it's now 9:37, we started Alderman time at 8:20. Um, we're going on an hour and almost, uh, 20 minutes for Alderman time. We only allow the public three minutes each to speak. Um, I think we should limit the Alderman to three minutes each, we, we, we have way too much discussion up here, you guys. Motions on the fly, this is, this is so unusual, I've been up here over four years, we've never seen this before. We need to get our act together, we, we, we need to be professionals up here. Do you have staff? Call them, ask them, go, go to them, do the, work the process. There's a reason there's a... There's a reason there's a process, there's laws about how we behave up here and how we, we make things happen. It's insane that we're, we're sitting here for an hour and 20 minutes, listening to people ramble on and argue back and forth and have conversations, it's, it's, it's getting out of hand. I think we need to hold ourselves accountable to the same standards we hold our community. And if they have to get their thoughts together in three minutes, we should too, that's all.
Alderman Hayes.
Pass.
Mayor Taylor.
I just want to remind people that the kids are in school. You know, again, if we want our kids respected and we want people to drive safely through the communities, let's understand that rules apply to everybody, and let's make our kids safe by cutting the speeding down. I'm telling you, we're not observing bus stops, we're not observing when the arm is out on the school bus, we're flying by, please. These are our children and our community. I will say again, please, 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 follow the speed limits and follow the rules of the city. Thank you very much, everyone, have a great evening, we'll see you in two weeks. I'm sorry, a first, I was going to that first?
Motion.
Who is the first? Alderman Donaworth, second, Alderman Martinez, all those in favor?
Aye.